You're testifying here today and in presenting your written testimony is to present your opinion that continuing to operate labor and delivery services at Sharon Hospital would not, in your view, impose a significant continuing financial burden on the hospital. That's your view, isn't it?
Correct.
And you submitted a written prefile testimony that included various exhibits in support of your opinions or related to your opinions, correct?
Yes.
Now, the exhibits that you submitted and attached to your prefile testimony did not include a curriculum vitae. Am I right about that?
Yes.
And so you have not provided OHS with a written summary of your education, your training, your work experience. Isn't that so?
Not entirely. On page one, I have a paragraph, a summary paragraph of my education, my work experience, and my experience as an expert on a very summary basis.
Yes. And in that discussion in your prefile testimony, one of the things that you tell OHS is that in your former work, like you were the president of Heritage Capital Incorporated, correct?
Yes.
And that's a regional investment banking firm?
Yes.
So you were an investment banker, correct?
Yes.
Professional life?
Yes.
I'm correct that there's nothing in your written prefile testimony that discloses prior work experience in hospital management, right?
The only experience, there was some experience in
Yes, sir. Is there anything in your written prefile testimony that discloses that you have prior work experience in the field of hospital management?
With the exception of clients that were medical or health-related as part of Heritage Capital.
You never worked in a hospital, correct?
Yes.
You never worked in financial management in a hospital, correct?
Correct.
Nothing in your written prefile testimony states that you have any prior experience in hospital finance or hospital accounting, correct?
Yes.
Do you know what HFMA stands for?
I'm not sure.
It's Healthcare Financial Management Association. Are you a member of the Healthcare Financial Management Association?
No.
That's a professional membership organization made up of healthcare finance management executives. You're not a healthcare finance management executive, correct?
Correct.
And you've never been certified by HFMA as a certified healthcare financial professional, correct?
Correct.
All right. At page two of your prefile testimony, you talk about, as a subject heading, reimbursement problems that you believe rural hospitals are facing. Can you refer to page two of your prefile testimony?
I have it in front of me. What line are you referring to?
I'm referring to the section in bold that starts background to financial issues impacting labor and delivery services nationwide. Do you see that?
Yes.
And one of the things you talk about are major problems that face rural hospitals like Sharon Hospital, correct?
Yes.
And in your written testimony, you summarize an article from 2020 that looked at obstetric services in rural counties in the United States. That's at page two of your of your prefile testimony, and you cite an article for that discussion at note four. You see that?
I see here at note three.
Apologize. Note three, correct?
Note three. And note three you see is on page seventeen.
Correct. So that refers to the article about access to rural maternity healthcare. And then there's also another article at note four, which talks about changes in hospital-based obstetric services in rural U.S. counties, correct? You looked at that article as well.
Yes.
So let's focus on the article that you reference, the 2020 article that published the results of the study of hospital-based obstetric services from the four-year period from 2014 to 2018. I just want to focus with you on that particular article. You state in your written prefile testimony that one of the findings in that article is that researchers pinpointed that there were 54% of rural counties in the United States that had no hospital-based obstetric services, correct?
Yes.
And that was the study finding in the four-year period from 2014 to 2018. So that reflects what the current state of play was in the United States up to 2018. Am I right about that?
It says 2014.
Yes, the study period was from 2014, the four-year period from 2014 through 2018, correct?
But what they're talking about found that 54% of rural U.S. counties had no hospital-based obstetric service in 2014.
Okay. And so you would agree with me that the findings of that article are that the majority of rural counties in the United States as of 2014 had no hospital-based labor and delivery service, correct?
That's what the article stated.
And you know, of course, that Charlotte Hungerford Hospital is in Litchfield County, correct?
Yes.
And if OHS were to approve the application to discontinue labor and delivery services at Sharon Hospital, Litchfield County would not be one of the counties that would fall within the majority of U.S. counties that are rural that have no hospital-based LND service, because that service would still be available at Charlotte Hungerford, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Now, your written testimony also included an article about the financial performance of obstetric programs in rural hospitals, and I think that's at page three of your presentation. Do you see that?
And what are you referring to?
I'm referring to the part of your written prefile on page three at the top that talks about, and I'm quoting, about 40% of rural hospitals are losing money on their obstetrics, obstetrics programs.
I don't see the reference.
Sir, I'm sorry. Bear with me. Look at the top of page three.
Okay. Okay.
Three lines down at the top of page three, about 40%. Do you see that?
I don't see it.
It starts here. No, you're on the wrong page.
This is page three.
You got the wrong page here.
What page are you looking at? Okay.
You have the reference, sir?
Yep, I have it. It got reprinted and pages have changed.
All right, are you ready?
Continue, please.
All right. And the authority that you cite for your written commentary in your prefile is an article at note five at page seventeen. Can you go to that page, please?
Yep. Yep.
And if you look at note five, what that refers to is an article that you presented to OHS from 2022, the title of which is Nearly Half of Rural Hospitals Lose Money on Childbirth, correct?
Yes.
Now, you're well aware, obviously, that Sharon Hospital has reported a continuing pattern of losing money on the operation of labor and delivery services here at the hospital, correct?
Yes, sir.
So it's among and consistent with the article that you cite of nearly half of rural hospitals in the United States losing money on labor and delivery services as an operation, right?
Yes, but the letter does say, the text does say, about 40% of rural hospitals are losing money on those obstetric programs, but many continue to provide the service because of its importance for community health, a new study shows.
Right. And that's what you think Sharon Hospital should do, correct?
What I'm saying is
Sir, is it your opinion that Sharon Hospital should continue to operate a labor and delivery service that costs more to operate than the revenue it takes in?
It doesn't have to lose money. I'm not saying it should continue. I'm not saying it should continue to lose money.
You're going to have to stop and you're going to have to answer the question that I asked you. I asked you if it's your opinion that Sharon Hospital should continue to operate a labor and delivery services unit that continually costs more to operate than the revenue it generates. Is that your opinion, yes or no?
Not entirely. I can't answer the question either with a yes or a no. It has to be qualified.
You've answered it, and I appreciate the answer. Thank you. Now, you you also cite another article published by JAMA that talks about opinions and and beliefs of rural hospital administrators around the country. And you quote something from that article to the effect of administrators at hospitals that have labor, rural hospitals that have labor and delivery services that are losing money, quote, chose to keep their rural hospitals' obstetrics programs open even after they stopped being financially viable, end quote. Is it your opinion that OHS should order Sharon Hospital to continue to operate a labor and delivery service even after it stops being financially viable? Yes or no?
Impossible to answer that question with a yes or a no. It's a qualified yes.
You think Sharon Hospital could do better, right? It could advertise more, it could get financial contributions, all those things you think.
It can be made, it can be made self-sufficient and cash-positive. But are you asking for my opinion?
And is that based on your experience of running a hospital or having any experience in hospital financial management, sir?
No, it's based upon 50 years of business experience with marketing background and cost experience as well. Yes. If you only want to cost
Please don't interrupt the witness, Mr. Tucci.
If you want, if you want to keep cutting costs, that's one option. But if you can cost reduce, but at the same time increase marketing, Sharon Hospital and NuVance, as its parent, has not increased the marketing and has curtailed certain services in the past. I point that out in my memo. That's all I'm going to say. I can expound upon that, but that's all I will say for the moment.
That's fair enough. Are you aware of what the data show as to what the historical trends have been for women of childbearing age in Connecticut and Litchfield County in particular? Do you know those statistics?
What statistics are you referring to, sir?
I'm referring to whether you have any knowledge of what the historical data show as to what the market is for patients of childbearing age and whether that's increasing, decreasing, or staying steady. Do you have any knowledge of that one way or the other?
Up to the time of the COVID epidemic, there was a decline. However, it is our contention that new families have moved into this area. I will further point out that Fairview Hospital, my understanding is, is operating successfully OB service with 135 patients. Now, if they can run it with 135 patients, granted, it's a critical access care facility and designated as such, why couldn't Sharon Hospital do the same thing?
What data is there in your written prefile testimony that shows the financial operations and results of Fairview Hospital?
None.
Thank you. All right. Your testimony addresses Sharon Hospital's report that it's experiencing nearly $3 million in annual losses, right?
Yes.
And your opinion is that those financial losses from the operation of the labor and delivery service at the hospital, you believe them to be materially overstated, right?
There are certain issues with them that have not been addressed, and we've tried to get answers as to what the number should be, but we're unsuccessful.
All right.
So we're not sure what the real number is, sir.
Let's look at, let's look at the chart that you provided as part of your prefile testimony, which is entitled Nursery and Labor Delivery Room Profitability Analysis Fiscal Year 2019.
It's on page sixteen you're referring to, Mr. Tucci?
Correct. Yes.
Are you aware, Professor, Attorney Tucci, are you aware this is not my exhibit?
Yes, I'm aware of that, Mr. Jermak. You attached it to your prefile testimony, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm going to ask you some questions about it. But I want you to focus on the top portion of the document, the one that shows revenue and operating expenses.
Yes, sir.
So this is an analysis that was done for fiscal year of 2019, and it shows that the total revenue generated at Sharon Hospital for nursery and labor and delivery room services was approximately $1.9 million. Do you see that?
I'm sorry.
You're the very top number.
Yes.
In your written prefile testimony, did you present any data or financial information showing that Sharon Hospital generated more than $1.9 million of revenue from the operation of its labor and delivery service?
No.
Let's look at the operating expense. It shows a staffing cost of approximately $2.5 million. Do you see that?
Yes.
In your written prefile materials, did you supply any data or financial information demonstrating that Sharon Hospital spent less than $2.5 million for staffing?
No.
Let's look at professional fees. Professional fee expense is reported at approximately $1.7 million. In your written prefile materials, did you submit any data or financial information demonstrating that Sharon Hospital spent less than $1.7 million on professional fees?
We raise some questions as to what that consists of and what it includes.
And you presented no data or no financial information demonstrating anything about that number to be less than $1.7 million. Isn't that so?
That is so, because we never received any additional information or detail.
Sir, isn't the bottom line of what the substance of your prefile testimony suggests is that what you want OHS to do is to do a close examination of the financial statements of Sharon Hospital, correct?
Among other things, yes, sir.
Who address some of the questions or theories or concerns that you raise in your prefile testimony, right?
I know this, yes.
And if OHS does what you want, which is to do a close examination of the financial statements concerning Sharon Hospital and the operation of the labor and delivery unit and finds that they are in order, they will have done exactly what you want. Isn't that so?
True.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Are you finished with your cross-examination?
Yes.
Okay. Attorney Knarck, do you have any follow-up questions for?
Mr. Jermak, assuming that there was a $3 million loss as claimed by the hospital from operating maternity, you believe that that would justify a closure?
No. I would not. Furthermore, I would add that there's a number of issues that we raised about this which never answered. We still don't know what's in these lansery expenses or in the allocated expenses. We never got, we never got a statement. Where do these numbers come from? What were the percentages? Why were they percentage allocated? I don't know. We asked and we never found out. And it's not clear to me that some of these numbers, how they were derived.
That's all I have at this point.
Thank you, sir.
Attorney Tucci, I believe you wanted to do Dr. Mortman next. Are you prepared to move forward cross-examination of Dr. Mortman?
Yes.
Yeah, I make a just a procedural comment. But Dr. Cavley had to leave the room because of an emergency C-section that's occurring right now, and others may become unavailable. So I need to know whether what, you know, we'd like to know whether Mr. Tucci wants to cross-examine others besides Dr. Mortman, so I can see what we can do about having those people available if they're needed.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Knack. No, I will report to both you and to the hearing officer after we're concluded with our discussion with Dr. Mortman. That will be the end of our cross-examination.
Okay.
Thank you. So you can proceed whenever you're ready, Attorney Tucci. After Dr. Mortman, I think we'll take another short break. We'll ask some OHS questions and then wrap things up.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Mortman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, good evening.
Dr. Mortman, I just want to make sure you have your prefile testimony available to you.
Yeah, I don't have the appendages, but I have, you know, my written testimony.
We'll get to the appendage.
Well, and more, also, I'm going to be asking you some questions that pertain to data that's contained in some of the CLN documents that have been provided by Sharon Hospital. You've reviewed the CLN application and the various supplemental filings, correct?
No, not in detail.
Okay. Well, we're going to review some of them tonight. So if your council did have them available, we're going to discuss some of the data that appears in the applicant's CLN materials. All right, we're ready to proceed? Doctor, you are a member of Sharon OB-GYN Associates, correct?
Yes.
And you testified that you have an office that's located in Sharon, correct?
Yes.
According to your, to your private practices website, your office also maintains a location in Winstead, Connecticut, correct?
Yes.
Located at 115 Spencer Street?
Yes.
And according to the little research that I did, Winstead, you would agree with me, is about 10 and 1/2 miles away from Torrington, where Charlotte Hungerford is located.
I don't have reason to disagree.
Now, I want to talk a little bit about your experience as an OB-GYN practitioner. Is it I apologize if this is sort of elemental, but it is correct that a large part of what your practice involves is providing medical care to patients during the nine-month term of pregnancy, correct?
One of the many things we do, but a vital portion of what we do is providing prenatal care, yes.
You don't just deliver babies. You provide prenatal care during the patient's term of pregnancy, nine months before the expected delivery date, correct?
Yes.
And part of the services that you provide as an OB-GYN include discussions with the patient about developing a birthing plan for that patient?
Yes.
And a birthing plan involves decisions by the patient with your input and recommendations about the hospital where the delivery will take place, correct?
We certainly talk about delivery.
And in having those discussions about options for delivery at the end of the pregnancy term, those discussions take place oftentimes months before the date of the expected delivery, correct?
Yes.
And one of the reasons that you have those kinds of discussions with your patients is to ensure that there's a plan in place so that there's no question when the time comes that delivery of the child is expected, that that there's no confusion or misunderstanding about how that is going to go and where it's going to take place, correct?
Yes, we have a conversation about what to do when in labor.
Now, I want to talk to you about some trends and historical data relating to regional and national birth trends. And so I direct your attention to the CLN application at page SH0015.
Give us one second and we'll come up to that page. Look for 0015.
Okay.
Have you seen this chart before?
Not that I recall.
So let's just look briefly at it. It's a fairly simple chart. What it shows is the historical trend of birth trends in Connecticut and Litchfield County for the nine- or 10-year period from 2010 to 2019. Do you see that?
Yes.
And it shows what that, that chart depicts what the data is for that time period for birth rates per thousand women, correct?
Let me look at it for a minute, because, you know, I see a graph. I have to read what's being defined in the graph. Annual births and birth rates. Connecticut as a whole and Litchfield County. Okay, I see it. And it's per 1,000 women in certain age groups. Okay.
Right. And the blue line is Connecticut, that's on top, and the red line is Litchfield County, correct?
That's what the graph says.
And in 2010, it shows a rate of approximately eight per thousand women for Litchfield County. And when you look at the, at the reported data from 2019, it shows a decline from eight per thousand, correct?
Ever so slightly.
Yeah. Did you present any data in your written prefile testimony to suggest or demonstrate that over the last 10 years, there's been an increase in the birth rates in, for patients in Litchfield County?
Not to my knowledge.
Because the birth rates for women for 1,000 in Litchfield County haven't increased. At best, they've remained flat or declined slightly, correct?
I absolutely wouldn't agree with that. I don't know that, but I suspect very different. I was presented with a flood of COVID-related New York patients that came up that I've been taking care of for the last two years. A remarkable number of frightened women that talk about COVID and the importance of what Sharon Hospital did. We took care of all those frightened women, and you've heard from many of them tonight, coincidentally, about what it's meant to have this place to come to for safety and the hospital for care. So no, I see this ending at 2019, and I would not venture to say that. The supermarket in Sharon, let me finish, please, they presented to me this question. Dr. Mortman, I saw that poster. How could they be closing maternity? We're selling more How could they be closing maternity? We're selling more baby food than we've ever sold infant formula. I, I, I'm sorry. I just wanted to expand on that.
That's quite all right. Are there any other anecdotes you'd like to present?
No, I could keep going, but that's, that's enough.
Okay, that's fine. So let me, let me direct your attention actually back to the data on page eight. That data is reported by the Connecticut Department of Public Health. Do you have any information to dispute the decline that's shown from 2010 to 2019? Yes or no?
Okay, so we're back to the same graph?
Yes.
I don't have any reason either way to dispute it or support it. You know, there, there's a graph with some information.
Let's take a look at the, at another graph that talks about what the projected future landscape looks like for obstetric deliveries. Please direct your attention to page SH 00018. Of the CLN application.
I'm here.
Have you had a chance to look at that chart?
No, but I'm looking at it right now.
The title of the chart is obstetric, obstetrics five year forecast, and it shows what the forecast expected rate of obstetric discharges is from 2021, projected through 2026 for the Northeast. You see that?
Yes.
And it shows a projected rate of discharges of 580,000 for the northeastern part of the United States in 2021, declining to 540,000 approximately in 2026. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
Is there anything in your written prefile materials that presents any data showing that there is an expected increase trend in the Northeast part of the United States in obstetric discharge?
No, but then again, I, I wonder when that data was produced. I also think this graph exaggerates the drop because you can do that with graphs and how you present numbers. I'm not impressed.
All right. Let's see if you're impressed by this next graph, doctor. One of the things that has been expressed in terms of various opinions by the witnesses who testified, testified here is that NuVance should have done more to promote labor and delivery services at Sharon Hospital. That's an opinion that you have and that other witnesses have expressed. Is that right?
Absolutely.
All right, if you could take a look at page 15 of the CLN application. There's a chart there entitled the current births in the town of Sharon. Do you see that?
Um, I see the chart. I've got to interpret it because it's a lot of points. And first Sharon Hospital 2020. Okay. What would you like me to glean from this?
All right, so we're, we're going to walk through this chart. So just bear with me. Yeah, this chart, as I look at it, shows current births for the town of Sharon where you practiced with data that begins in 2005 and goes through 2019, correct?
I, I still am having a hard time interpreting this. Let me make sure I'm looking at the correct.
Yeah, I
Yeah, I'm not really understanding what you're saying and how that translates to this chart. And this is also from 2020, probably three-year-old data.
Mr. Tucci, are you looking at a chart that says births at Sharon Hospital FY 2020?
No, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, this comes from the first completeness response on page 11. I apologize.
Okay, you got to give us a minute then to find that.
This, this looks like the same graph we just looked at to me. The obstetrics five year forecast is page 11.
No, it's a different document that he wants you to look at now.
Okay.
That's completeness response.
So page 11. I'm sorry, I see SH 00216. So how do I get to page 11? Oh, I see. I'm sorry, up top. It's seven. Sorry about any delay. Okay. So now I'm looking at a, a graph. Well, it's, it's a listing of data.
Right, I'm sorry. Now, now that you have that reference in front of you, I apologize. It's page 15, the current births town of Sharon. It's a graph in the top portion of the page.
So, excuse me, I'm trying to help the witness find the page you're talking about, Mr. Tucci. So are you looking?
April 11, 2022, page 15.
Are you looking at the top right-hand page 15 and 42?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so what's the question about this? And can, can you quickly explain the graph to me and then I'll orient myself?
Take a moment to look at. Yeah, if you could just take a moment to study the chart. I want to ask you a few questions about it.
Current first, what should I glean? What does a current first mean? In, in your words?
Well, so, doctor, you, you're having trouble understanding this chart. It shows that the if you testify about the, the number of births that take place in the Labor and Delivery Service Unit at Sharon Hospital. And this chart shows what that number is in the town of Sharon, the current births in the town of Sharon.
Okay, so it's not as a Sharon Hospital, it's the town of Sharon because we have home births. Matter of fact, we had a patient that had a failed home birth that we had to take care of at the hospital emergently two weeks ago.
All right, let, let's, let's, let's look at the chart. Specifically, I want to focus your attention on the period 2005 to 2012. Can you look at the data points in the chart?
Yes.
And you would agree with me that at no point from 2005 through 2012 was there, was there ever a year where there were more than 250 births reported at Sharon Hospital?
Yeah, I mean, the highest number I see here is 243.
Right. And between 2005 and 2012, Sharon Hospital was owned by a for-profit healthcare company called Essence Healthcare, correct?
Yes, and that was before the explosion of patients from New York, yes.
Now, your written testimony also talks about outmigration of patients from the Sharon Hospital service area. And you understand the Sharon Hospital service area to consist of the town, town of Sharon and the towns generally surrounding it, the six or seven major towns, right?
Uh, it's more than that. We have patients because of our track record, our expertise. They've had bad experiences at hospitals close to them or very bad outcomes. Those are some of the patients I might see at Winstead, for example, that will, will come to us. And if there's
Your, your test, in any event, the question I add for you, doctor, is
Excuse me, Mr. Tucci.
You discuss.
Mr. Tucci, you cut, you cut off the doctor in the middle of his answer. He had, I don't know if he was finished or not, but he wasn't, he was cut off in the middle of order. Could you let him finish his answer, please? Go ahead.
Anything else you want to add, doctor?
Well, let's take me back to the question and I'll know if I'm finished, please.
Right, that's fine. Then I think we'll move on. The question I am asking you has to do with outmigration of patients from the Sharon Hospital service area. In particular, let me direct your attention to
Yes.
The data that appear on
Excuse me, you're breaking up. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Can you hear me now? I'm, I'm asking you to direct your attention to the data that appear on page seven of the CLN application, which is SH 00222.
I know. Okay.
I apologize. That's the completeness question.
Uh, I'm confused now, Mr. Tucci. Just repeat exactly which page and what document you're referring to.
It's the first completeness question, April 11, 2022, SH 00222.
Okay. Okay, um, so we're referring to which part of this is up page, please?
You have the document in front of you that shows data for fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021?
Yes.
And so this chart shows six towns in the Sharon Hospital service area. And it reflects the report of births at Sharon Hospital during that fiscal year. And births from those towns at hospitals other than Sharon Hospital, correct?
That's what the chart says from fiscal year 2020 and 2021, yes.
And what it shows is that from the six towns listed there in Sharon Hospital service area in fiscal year 2020, for those six towns, there was a total of 104 births, correct?
Um, yes, but you're missing many towns from the New York side that are equally important.
Yes, I didn't ask you about other towns. I didn't ask you to comment on anything. I asked you if I, if my, I asked you if the, the question of whether or not in those six towns it reported 104 births from those towns at Sharon Hospital in fiscal year 2020. Isn't that so?
Um, you know, again, I'm, I'm looking and I see a total. I see what it says is total. I, I haven't read what these are defined by. I'm not in the habit. I'm a little OCD about detail. My patients can confirm that. I, I'm not about to just jump and answer a question until I know what I'm talking about. I'm so sorry.
Well, doctor, you, you, you presented about 25 pages of written prefile testimonies where you discussed outmigration of patients. And so now I'd like to ask you about outmigrations of patients.
Well, the, the hospital in presenting
Doctor, I didn't ask you a question. I didn't ask you a question. I said, the question is, I'm asking you about outmigration of patients and what the data show about outmigration. And what the data show for fiscal year 2020 is that 43% of the births that took place from the, from the six towns in the primary service area went to hospitals other than Sharon Hospital, correct?
Um, you know, this talks about outmigration. It puts a number 43% and 48%. I'm not ready to say that it's, it's, it absolutely clarifies your question.
Right. And, and there's nothing in your written prefile materials that tracks the data or gives reasons gives data tracking reasons for why 43% of the patients in those six towns in Sharon's primary service area chose to have labor and delivery services at another hospital, correct?
No, that's wrong. I, I gave plenty of testimony about the bad press. NuVance, excuse me, health press.
I asked you about data. I didn't ask you about opinions. No, I'm sorry, sir.
This is not, this is, this is not
Did you give any data, sir? Did you give any data in your prefile testimony that tracks in any scientific way where those patients went and why they went where they went? Yes or no?
Not that I recall.
All right. Now, the, the last subject I want to discuss with you is thanks to a chart that appears on page 10 of the completeness questions April 11, 22, and that's at Sharon Hospital 00225. So please go to that chart.
Is it here? Yes, I have it.
You have it in front of you?
Yes.
You have a chance to look it over?
I'm looking at it right now.
Now, in this OHS table, what's provided is a breakdown of births by town for four years from fiscal year 2018 through 2021, correct?
Um, delivery is where?
These are deliveries from patients emanating from each of those towns listed on the chart.
Okay, that, that delivered where? Just if you can clarify, I don't want to guess.
It isn't a question of where they delivered. It's a question of where the patients came from, sir.
Okay, please rephrase the question.
Yes, this chart shows, does it not? A listing of breakdowns of births from patients in various towns. Many of which are in Sharon Hospital's primary service area, correct?
Not that I can tell. It doesn't say births. At least I don't see, I don't, I don't see. Okay, well, that's not the chart. So that's above the chart.
Okay, yes, let's read the words above the chart. Please find below an updated OHS table 10 that provides a breakdown of births by town for the four years requested fiscal year 2018 through 2021. Do you see that?
Yes, and that's, and should I assume that's births at Sharon Hospital?
Okay, we'll try it again. These are births shown by patients coming from, for example, look at fiscal year 2018. Let's see if this will help. You see the town of Torrington listed there?
Yes.
What that shows is that from the town of Torrington in fiscal 2024, there was a total discharges of 24 patients from that town. Breakdown of births, right?
Correct, yes.
And Torrington appears at the top of each of those charts in 18, 19, 20, and 21, right?
Um, no, Canaan in 19 and New Milford in 21.
All right, let's go through them one by one, doctor. 2018, Torrington, 24, correct?
Yes.
2019, Torrington, 14, correct?
I, I'm going to object at this point that the, this chart is part of the CLN. It's, uh, it's something that's been in the record. It wasn't testified to on direct examination. If Mr. Tucci has a question that, that relates to what I asked at cross-examination, that's fine. In direct examination, that's fine. Or what Dr. Mortman testified to in his, in his prefile. But he should confine his questions to questions that, that are relate to statements that Dr. Mortman did make in his prefile testimony and summary thereof.
Well, that's exactly what I'm doing, Hearing Officer Tucci. Dr. Mortman testified in his direct examination that in his opinion, there was no hospital within a reasonable distance for patients who did give birth at Sharon Hospital to go to. So now I want to look at a chart that shows that in fiscal year 2018, there were 28 patients who lived in the town of Torrington who, uh, who were discharged from labor and delivery at Sharon Hospital. Do you see that?
I think you meant 24.
24, excuse me.
Um, just say the question again, Chris. You know, I feel that you're twisting information, but go ahead, please.
All right, doctor, I certainly don't want to twist anything.
Well, I think you are.
All right, sir, we're going to have a very difficult time if you don't listen to the question that I ask and answer the question. I don't think it's appropriate for you to be editorializing in that fashion. And if you do it again, I'm going to ask the hearing officer to direct you not to do it. Okay? Are you prepared to answer my questions now, sir?
I didn't, I didn't, but I heard what you said.
All right, let's look at the chart because we're going to go through this because it's important.
Sure.
In fiscal year 2018, what the data show is that from the town of Torrington, there were 24 patients who came from Torrington who delivered babies at Sharon Hospital. That's what the data show. Do you have anything to dispute that? Yes or no?
No.
All right, in fiscal year 2019, it shows that there were 14 patients who lived in the town of Torrington who delivered babies at Sharon Hospital. Do you have any data to, do you have any information to dispute the veracity of that data? Yes or no?
No.
In fiscal year 2020, it shows that there were 16 patients who came from the town of Torrington who delivered babies at the Sharon Hospital Labor and Delivery Service Unit. Do you dispute that?
No.
In fiscal year 2021, it shows that from the town of Torrington, there were 16 patients discharged. From the Sharon Hospital Labor and Delivery Unit who delivered babies in at Sharon. Do you dispute that?
No.
And if you total those up, take my word for it. It's 70 patients from fiscal years 2018 through 2021. Who lived in Torrington and went to Sharon Hospital to deliver babies. The 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 distance. From Torrington to Sharon, Connecticut is 24.3 miles. Do you have any information to dispute that that's an accurate driving distance?
No.
So those patients drove 24 and a half miles from Torrington to go to Sharon to deliver their babies, correct?
I can't be sure where their origin from when they drove, but according to this.
They live in Torrington, sir. They drove an average of 24.3 miles, correct?
Um, if they came from their homes, according to this, yes.
Right. And if labor and delivery services had not been available at Sharon Hospital during those fiscal years, 18, 19, 20, and 21. Those 70 patients could have gone to Charlotte Hungerford located in Torrington, correct?
They could have gone there then. They chose not to. They were not comfortable or feeling safe there. Those patients had their experiences.
You don't know whether those patients felt safe there or not. You have no way of knowing that, do you? All you know is that they chose to go to Sharon Hospital, but they also had a choice to go to Charlotte Hungerford, correct?
They have their choice.
All right. Uh, New Milford is another town that appears in the top part of that list. And we're not going to take the time to go through it, but you you do see that New Milford has a significant number of. Um, individual of of patients who lived in that town and came to Sharon Hospital during those years to deliver babies, correct?
Yes, that's because Nuva's had an office there and a doctor that was under their um employee that worked there. Yeah.
And the distance, uh, according to according to Google Maps. From New Milford to Sharon is 27 miles, which takes about 37 minutes to travel. Do you have any data to dispute that that's an accurate measure of the distance and time for travel?
I object. I object. I object to that question. It's Mr. Tucci is testifying about what he what he believes the facts are. And.
You have a phone, sir, if you want to Google it, you're free to. If you have any reason to disagree, you've lived in this in this part of the. Of of Connecticut for for 30 plus years. It's 27 miles from New Milford to Sharon, correct?
I think it depends on where you're in in that town, but um, I I'm not going to dispute it. I don't know that number.
And uh, the the distance between New Milford and Danbury is 15.7 miles. And it takes 22 minutes to get there or 15 minutes less than it would for a New Milford resident to drive to Sharon Hospital.
I I don't have any. I I'm not. I'm not sure what the time diagram would be.
Let me short circuit this, doctor. Do you have? Is there any data or information that you present? In your prefile testimony to dispute that approximately 75% of the Connecticut patients. Who gave birth at Sharon Hospital over the last several years. Could have traveled to a hospital that was actually closer to where they the town in which they live. Do you have any data to dispute that? Yes or no?
Um, I I think it, you know, I I since this.
Yes or no? Yet, yes or no? Did you present any data in your prefile testimony to dispute that fact?
Up to my knowledge.
All right, doctor, that's all the questions I have.
Uh, on redirect, on direct, on redirect. Uh, doctor, you in your cross examination, you talked about a surge that occurred at some point from New York, patients from New York. What what were you referring to?
Um, yeah, when when COVID became a reality, New York was one of the uh epicenters and. Many patients, many families came up here either temporarily or with the idea that they might stay. And there was many pregnant women that came scared.
Doctor, what percentage approximately of your of the patients who deliver at Sharon Hospital currently come from New York? New York State?
Uh, I'm going to estimate around 40%. Um, but somewhere somewhere around that number.
And so if you look at charts that talk about Connecticut and not New York, is that an incomplete uh? A picture of the uh, of the of the uh, service that you provide?
Usually so, yes.
Uh. That's all I have.
Doctor, you have your prefile testimony in front of you?
I do.
This is the 27-page document that you submitted to OHS.
I do.
Can you find the page, sir, that um contains the data that you reported to OHS? About uh, the number of um. Patients of childbearing age who relocated to Sharon, Connecticut?
Can you help me? Because I've got a lot of pages here.
It's your it's your testimony, sir. It I I read it. I read all 27 pages. I didn't see that information in there. Is it in there? Did I miss it?
Well, I believe you if you say you haven't even read it, you know that it's not there.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Uh, so as I indicated earlier, OHS does have some questions. At this time, I would like to take. Let's say a. 15-minute break.
Can I can I can I ask a question before we do the 15-minute break?
Sure.
So you have questions for. Uh, both the intervenors and the applicant? Witnesses?
I I know there are questions for the applicant. I don't know if there are any for the intervening.
And does this does Mr. Tucci have any? So what I'd like to know is the question I asked earlier. Sounds like Mr. Tucci's finished with his cross examination. And so I have these additional doctors who these additional witnesses who had testified. And I need to know whether they need to be available later, uh, or whether they're not needed. So the question is whether the staff has any questions for other anyone other than Dr. Mortman. And uh, and Mr. Germak.
Uh. Ms. Fiala and Ms. McLaughlin, do you have any questions for the intervenors?
Oh, we have questions for the intervenors, but it's for the doctors.
For those two doctors, for for Dr. Dr. Mortman and Mr. Germak.
Correct.
All right, so then the other the other witnesses are released. Is that correct here, Mr. Hearing Examiner, Mr. Hearing Officer?
Ms. Fiala, you you said the doctors. So were you referring to Dr. Mortman and another doctor? I'm sorry, I'm confused as to who you were.
Um, it depends on who can answer the questions ultimately, but. Um. Yeah.
Dr. Mortman should be able to answer whatever questions they have.
And that that works for me.
Okay.
So the other the other witnesses are released?
That's that's correct. And if there are any other questions that that cannot be answered by Dr. Mortman, then we will need to figure out a way to address that.
All right.
Um, so let's take a 15-minute break. We'll come back at 7:20. Um, I misspoke earlier. There are a couple members of the public. Who still wanted to provide some comment, so we will have those near the end and then we'll do uh closing arguments. Thank you. Thank you. Um. We are back on the record. This is the matter of Basser Health, Connecticut, DVA Sharon Hospitals. Application in docket number 22 dash 32511 dash CON. Uh, we just completed uh cross examination and redirect of the intervenors' witnesses. We're going to turn now to uh some questions from OHS staff. Um, and then after that, we will do. Um, closing arguments and then um. There are a few members of the public who still wish to make statements, uh, so we can take them at the very end. So with that, um, I will turn it over to the OHS analysts to ask their questions.
Okay, hello again. So I'll be asking the first set of questions. When did?
Are are these these are directed towards the applicant or the intervener?
The applicant.
Okay. And if if possible, try to direct them to specific people. If if you don't have specific people in mind, then just. Um. Just ask the question and Attorney Tucci, to the best of your ability, try to identify um the witness who would be. Most appropriate for answering that question.
Okay, yeah, so I think most of the questions I'll be asking, I'll let um. I'll let the attorney decide who would be the best person to answer them. So the first question, when did Sharon Hospital begin experiencing a decrease in volume?
I think you guys are muted.
Yes, I I'm just going to um look at the volume trend documents so I can be accurate. And when we we start to see a decrease, I mean, from my recollection, we have always been really a unit that's had low utilization. And we've had uh different ups and flows in our volume trends over the years. But I I'll just need that back to see exactly when. Thank you. You know what's happening.
I'm sorry, was that was that the end of your answer?
Um, so I I just pulled the graph. I wanted to see what the actual data was and we see um a dip. Um, well, if the data I have in front of me goes back to 2016 where um we peaked. And this was really our peak when we go back 10 years or so, um, at 267 deliveries. And since then, we have seen a downward trend.
Okay, and when did Sharon Hospital begin referring patients out to other facilities?
You're you're referring to delivery of uh patients for potential labor and delivery services?
Correct.
So Sharon Hospital does not refer patients out to other facilities. The birth plan and where patients are going to deliver occurs um with the patient and their obstetrician. In the outpatient setting, Sharon Hospital does not dictate where patients deliver.
Okay, and when did Sharon Hospital increase the cost for labor and delivery services?
If you just give me a moment, I I don't recall us. We we don't have um any data supporting that we did ever increase the cost for labor and delivery services. Do we responded to that in one of the completeness questions as well?
That's my.
So just pulling the response here and um that uh we did not increase the cost of labor and delivery services. There's annual adjustments um to reimbursements based on negotiated um agreements. Other than that.
And Ms. McCullough, do you want to refer to the specific page of the um materials that um contain more detailed information on that?
This is um a completeness question response, SH 00230, and it's page 15 of 42.
Thank you. Okay, and on. Page 15 of the responses to the first completeness letter. Which is exhibit C. There's there's.
I think that's the page she was just referring to.
Right, yeah. Can you please update the graph on page 15 of the responses to first completeness letter? To include the volumes for 2021 through current?
Are you asking us to submit that as a late filing with the current data? Yes.
Yes, if you agree.
Do 21 and 22.
It's based on it's based on public data, but it's not even.
Oh. Because the source of that was um from DPH. That data wasn't available to include, so we have our internal data, but not through this source.
So can you include it as a late file?
Need to explain. So the big source that we use to obtain this data. Is portal dot CT dot gov. It's uh state information through the Department of Public Health. Uh, the the data through the Department of Public Health is usually delayed. So this is the most current data that this source provided. I was noting that we have internal data that that we had that we track that shows our census for. For our deliveries for 21 and 22, but it does not come from this source, so we cannot update this graph until DPH updates their source.
Okay.
But this this was submitted on April 11, 2022, so Ms. McCullough, you're you're. You're stating that to your knowledge, you don't know, you you don't think DPH has updated this information?
To my knowledge, but we can validate that. And should there be updated information available, we can submit that.
Okay, I I think that's the the late file that Yudira was looking for.
Correct. Okay, so 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 just to be clear. We will try to see if there's more updated public uh data available, and if so, we'll provide it, but for our knowledge, there may not be.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And that was Attorney Boyle for the record.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Tucci and Attorney Boyle.
Okay. The births that are currently occurring at Sharon Hospital, are they emergency births?
Um, so. Births. There's a combination of births, right? So some of them may be routine births, some may be urgent, some may be emergent.
While in route to Sharon Hospital, has the EMS diverted any labor and delivery patients to another hospital in the past three to four years?
Uh, not to our knowledge, and I believe we did do a review of our diversion records and we did not find any diversions, no. May I make a clarification, just going back to your previous question? I I want to just make sure. I want to just make sure that it is understood that our labor and delivery unit is fully open and operational, just as it always happened, has been. We have not reduced any services. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Okay. When a woman shows up at the hospital to give birth to deliver, how will Sharon Hospital determine if ER nurses will deliver the baby or if there is time to transfer the patient to another location?
Is this assuming that there is a closure of the inpatient labor and delivery services unit? Is that the premise of your question?
Yes.
Both of you can answer.
Yes. Dr. Luca is just going to join me in answering this question. But I can share that we have developed policies in conjunction with our obstetricians to guide our staff on what to do in different scenarios. I'll let you elaborate.
So the first and foremost is the understanding that this is a large communication piece. So that obstetricians are basically discussing, as we as we have said earlier, on where their patients are going to deliver. So but there aren't the what we will call a drive by where patients are going to the emergency room. But if they need to be seen in the ED, the emergency room staff, whether they set up triage and then it's immediately moved to the ED physician, evaluate the patient to see if she is an active labor or not. And then based on that assessment, then they can transfer her if she is stable for transfer.
Okay, and who will make that assessment? Is there a specific staff member that will make that assessment?
No, that is a medical assessment that is able to be done by the ED physician.
Okay, and if the decision is to transfer a patient via ambulance, was staff members, if any, will be present in the ambulance?
It depends on the patient and her medical condition. Usually it's just the EM, the EMS staff that is transporting the patient from the facility of lower acuity to the one of higher acuity.
There are some situations today, some clinical situations that warrant a nurse go on a transport from a patient or from an ED to another facility. It's not common, but it does occur in some situations. But those decisions are made by the clinical team caring for the patient.
What what sort of circumstances are you envisioning, Ms. McCullough?
I'm not envisioning any specific to labor and delivery. It just does occur in some clinical situations outside of labor and delivery today.
Okay.
Thank you. So when or in what circumstance would Sharon Hospital staff allow someone to drive themselves versus in an ambulance?
It depends on if the patient has actually been admitted. If or if the patient has been formally triaged in the emergency room, they can't be transferred by private vehicle unless they leave on on their own accord.
Or so, so.
So the answer is no, the answer is that would not happen.
Correct. Unless a patient was assessed and deemed appropriate to be discharged and then could self transport to another facility. That would have to be determined safe and appropriate by the emergency department physician.
Okay, and referencing the C O N application on page 30, on the top of page 30.
Just one moment.
Sure.
Are you referring to the Bates stamp number or the the page number?
The page number.
Okay.
We have it.
Okay, you're there?
So we're here, yeah.
Okay, so there's a process regarding the system wide transfer center. The process described on the application seems complex and lengthy. How long the Sharon Hospital intend this process will take? The system wide transfer center process.
I don't, I don't think we have the correct page. But I can.
If you go.
Okay.
Just just for clarity, what what page are we referring to? I'm sorry.
This is a page, the S H zero 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 three zero. And it'd be the page 23 of 10 121. And it begins at the top of the paragraph. Additionally, Newbans Health has an internal 24/7 system wide transfer center. So this this part of the application refers to a description of the health systems, system wide 24/7 transfer center and its operation.
Thank you, attorney Tucci.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, your question was how long does this process take?
Yes, correct.
So that it varies depending on the patient, their condition, the receiving hospital and the availability of beds. So that's not, it's not a one answer to that. It varies very much on the individual patient.
Are we talking though, for example, like hours, a couple minutes? Like generally speaking, I understand that it definitely differs, but generally speaking.
And it really depends on the acuity of the patient. When it comes to especially like labor and delivery, and I'm not trying to be difficult, we will regularly say you have to monitor a patient for a period of time. And if there is no cervical change, then the assessment is this is an active labor. She can be transferred. But that is a timestamp. It's not something that happens in minutes. And so that's just obstetrics. So if you're talking about other medical conditions too, cardiac or whatnot, I don't know those specifics. So it does vary on the patient's acuity. But once the transfer, once the acceptance of the transfer is set, the timeframe depends on just the availability of the ambulance and then the distance between the two facilities.
And there's also a description at S H zero zero two four nine relating more specifically to emergency OB transfers and the initiation of what's called an OB alert, which the witnesses can talk about in more detail, what that means.
Yeah, so the OB alert is a process that really we adopted from a model that New Milford Hospital used. And we have a war group that was comprised of emergency department clinicians and and OB clinicians. And we wanted to put in place an expedited process so that if a patient did come in in labor and we didn't have a labor and delivery unit, how would we alert the receiving facility that, hey, we need to get the patient there emergently? And so we have a policy, and I believe we did provide it to OHS as an attachment, where we would initiate an OB alert to expedite that and to get an obstetrician and accepting obstetrician at the receiving facility on the phone to do that quickly.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, will families be considered in the transportation process as well? So like fathers of the child, unborn child, siblings, et cetera?
Typically standard practice. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead. You were answering.
Typically EMS practice for transport is unless the patient is a minor, it's the patient that is transferred. EMS cannot take responsibility for a non-ill, non-medical person in their transport vehicle. So family members followed by car.
And is transportation going to be provided after birth? For example, when the mother is bringing the child home?
So as part of the discharge planning process in the hospital today for any patient, labor and delivery or other, we do have what we call case managers that work with our patients on a discharge plan. And should there be needed assistance for transportation, we're able to assist in that either through taxi services sometimes. Family are unable to. There's also other services sometimes available depending on the town that patients live in. But that is a part of our discharge process in the hospital setting for every patient.
So I just asked a follow up question on that. Um, so you're saying that's what current practices at Sharon Hospital is that you have case managers? If the labor and delivery department though is to close, are those case managers going to follow the patients to the hospital to then provide them transportation back home? Or is that then in the hands of the receiving hospital?
It's in the hands of the receiving hospital. Again, to, I understand the concern of like, what is the plan? And you know, patients show up emergently, but also to really recognize that the likelihood of patients showing up in active labor or with an OB emergency is a low likelihood and that the previous history of the ability of this health system to set up this process has previously been established with with New Milford Hospital. So this isn't a new idea. A lot of these patients, again, also as Mr. Tucci pointed out earlier, is that over 40%, almost 50% of these patients have facilities closer to them. So actually going to Sharon is out of their way. So while we have a plan and we're expediting that plan and the providers are are well trained, again, it's a plan for an unlikely eventuality.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes my portion of the questions and I'll be handing it over to Annalise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So going, moving on to the next question. It was discussed that the transportation is going to be covered by insurance. If insurance does not cover the the entire cost, who will cover the remainder of the transportation cost for each labor and delivery patient?
Between the two hospitals? Yeah, can you clarify what transportation cost you're referring to?
Sure, between the two, I overheard that on between the two hospitals. So if Sharon Hospital is transferring a patient out to another area hospital for labor and delivery services, who will cover if there is a remain, if the insurance does not cover the entire cost, who will pick up the rest?
Yeah, I believe the patient covers the remaining cost. It's what we do today for interfacility transfers, no different. But I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on the answer.
Okay. Um, so if a patient is transferred to a hospital that it's out, that's out of network due to proximity and emergency status, who will cover that cost then to and from if sent out of state?
That is usually covered by insurance if the hospital and the diagnosis determine that it is medically necessary. That those services are not provided by the facility, whether there is no labor and delivery unit or whether that they need to go to a facility of higher acuity. So that would regularly happen for patients that are preterm and transfer from Sharon to Vassar or Sharon to Danbury. Usually those fees are covered by insurance because it was medically necessary.
Okay, thank you. Does Sharon Hospital know the cost of delivery services at other locations?
I do not have that information.
So for the most part, delivery fees is a, is a global package. So maternity care comes as a global package that your insurance company determines what that, if you're low risk or high risk, determines what your maternal fee is and deliveries are included in that. So any ancillary fees that come from the hospital would be relegated to fees that don't have anything to do with labor and delivery. So again, most of those fees are covered under the patient's insurance.
Okay, thank you. And then my next.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I just do a quick follow up on that? This is Steve Lazarus. Can you compare the cost of labor and delivery at Sharon Hospital to say, for example, Danbury? Is, are they comparable? Are they, one is lower than lower or higher? Can you talk a little bit about that? Or any other hospitals also within the network? I realize you may not know that outside the network.
Is it?
When you're saying within that, you mean Newbans?
Is it, are you asking for the charges or are you asking for the cost to the patient or?
Just go with the charges.
And was that attorney Boyle speaking?
Yes, sorry.
No, it's fine. I just just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. But we're just discussing with our finance.
Sure, no problem.
See if we have that information available. So we're going to have to, we don't have that information readily available. So we will have to get back to you with that, with those costs. We could, we'll try to get back to you, like if you want to just move to the next question. But and then if not, we will.
Okay.
Working on our finance people.
That's fine.
So then moving on to the next question. Sharon Hospital is at the edge of Connecticut, New York and Massachusetts. Has Sharon Hospital looked into insurance coverages across state lines?
So this, our labor and delivery population would be no different than any other patient that crosses state lines to receive our services.
I think I'm, so I'm asking the opposite way. So if somebody in Connecticut that needs to be transferred out of state is more so, what I'm kind of looking for.
Yeah, again, that's something that we do today. And we have different agreements with different insurers to cover that. So our patients today, we have residents that that cross state lines for various reasons.
Okay. I'm moving on then to my next question. Part of what you, your organization was saying or the applicant was saying is that there's about two births, I believe, per week currently average, is that correct?
Yeah, when, yes, looking at our Connecticut population in our most recent fiscal year, we were doing approximately two births per week.
Okay, um, do you have a, are there any guidelines indicating what volume is considered to result in a high quality and safe program? Or in other words, do you have a minimum volume level needed to provide inpatient OB services?
So the standard typically had been approximately 200 deliveries to say that you had a viable unit. However, that information is under contestation by updated articles rating dates from 2021 to 2022. Let's say looking at facilities that deliver in rural areas. If you're delivering, the conclusion was if you're delivering less than 500, there is concern regarding potential for quality, potential for outcomes, poorer outcomes compared to facilities that were hired, delivered higher than 500 deliveries per year.
Does, does that number, is that number ever based on size of the facility? Or is that strictly across the board for 500?
Correct, it's based on what the unit itself delivers, not based on the size of the facility. Although, yes, you'll see facilities like medical centers are the higher yield. Although yes, you'll see facilities like medical centers are the higher yield organizations. But again, you have smaller hospitals, some community based, some that are just hospitals that deliver greater than five hundred.
Um, just a quick follow up on that one. Steve Lazarus. What is, what's, um, which professional organization is that, would you be citing that five hundred number to?
I'll have to get back regarding the citation on that.
We, we can provide that.
Okay, thank you. Sure, that would be great. And if you can actually provide, you know, if some sort of an article from that standard from this professional article, that would be great citation.
All right, moving on to my next question. Um, does Sharon Hospital have any existing relationships with other OB or prenatal providers in the community?
So the community providers in the Sharon community are Sharon OB GYN, who we discussed today. We also do have New Vans owned OB GYN practice that's located in New Milford. And they do perform deliveries at Sharon Hospital and, and provide call coverage. Other than that, those are the only OB GYN providers in our service area. But we do have relationships with some of the obstetricians in our network of New Vans Health to use for consultation purposes if needed, or for example, when we're looking at policy development or working on the women's health service line, certainly Dr. Luca and Dr. Chong are involved.
Hey, I'm sorry, Ms. McCullough, you, you sort of trailed off a little. And I, I didn't catch the last, I'd say, sentence or two of what you said.
Um, I was just referring to other relationships we have, not patient care relationships, but relationships with obstetricians within our New Vans Health network that we work with when we're looking at the women's health service line and, and other OB related things. But as far as patient care in the Sharon service area, there's Sharon OB GYN, and then we have our practice in New Milford.
Uh, Mr. Chuk, if I could just go back to the question that was asked earlier about data relating to the five hundred standard. I can provide at least some interim information that's already in our C O N materials. And this is at Bates Page S H zero zero two eight. And, uh, the citing JAMA as a source, we indicate in our profile materials, and this is an article from Modern Healthcare in November of twenty twenty one. Quote, "Just seven point four percent of U S babies are born at hospitals that handle ten to five hundred births annually." According to a geographic analysis published last month in Jana, JAMA Network.
Thank you.
Okay, so you're using that as the quality standard? The inferior quality standard of being five hundred or more?
No, I was just, I was just pointing out that the, the question relating to five hundred and what the experience is nationwide with respect to percentage of births. We can certainly, Dr. Moon, can certainly check her professional sources for additional articles that relate to, you know, safety and quality as well. We'll do that.
Great, thank you.
Um, going back to then my questions about the existing relationships with other OB or prenatal providers in the community. If approved, if the C O N has approved, how will these relationships and the other facilities be affected by the closure?
I, I just need you to clarify, how will the relationships in the other facilities? What other facilities are you referring to?
Any of the other OB or prenatal providers in the community, any of the other, so for example, the, the Sharon Hospital OB GYN and the other, any other provider, yeah.
Um, so the, the New Vans Health medical practice that I refer to will remain. And we have engaged in conversations with Sharon OB GYN. Our hope is for Sharon OB GYN to stay in the community. We want to continue to partner with them to care for the patients in our community. Certainly Sharon OB GYN has to make that decision. They are a private practice. But we do intend to continue to work with them to provide pre and postnatal care and other women's services.
Um, and then again, if approved, how will Sharon Hospital provide the PSA population with relevant information regarding labor and delivery services to allow for patient choice?
How will Sharon Hospital provide that information to patients? That goes back to the birth planning that occurs between the patient and their obstetrician. So a lot of that ownership falls within the practices where, where those conversations are happening. Certainly as part of our, our, you know, the role of our women's health coordinator, health service line, we will be able to help guide patients and provide information on the different options that are available in the service area. But again, that birth planning and the decision on where to deliver really occurs in the outpatient setting with the patient and their obstetrician.
Yeah, Ms. McCullough, I think also part of the question was directed toward sort of what Sharon Hospital's plan is with regard to notice and dissemination of information into the community. If the C O N is approved, to assist patients in making informed choices. Can you comment on that?
Yes, thank you for clarifying. So, um, if approved, and once we determine what that timeline will be, we do intend to have extensive communication to all stakeholders in the community through a variety of, of methods.
Thank you. Um, so previously I, we, I had asked Dr. Murphy if Sharon Hospital is considered at risk of closure. Um, and he said that they were in, that Sharon Hospital is in financial distress. So as a follow up question to that, is that solely due to the labor and delivery service?
It is not solely due to labor and delivery service, no.
Thank you. Um, and does Sharon Hospital anticipate closing any other departments?
No, at this time, our plan does not include the closure of any other departments.
Um, as a late file, we are requesting a financial worksheet of New Vans's, uh, of New Vans's financial worksheet. If we can get that submitted, that would be great.
An updated financial works worksheet of the late filing. Are you asking for New Vans Health or for Sharon Hospital?
New Vans.
So, so we just want to get a clarification. When you say financial worksheet, we want to just make sure we understand exactly, you know, what data OHS is looking for so we can provide it. And for, is it for Sharon Hospital?
We're looking for, we're looking for New Vans's, New Vans Health's, they're like the financial worksheet that Sharon Hospital had filled out. The Excel sheet.
The financial attachment that goes with the C O N application that was completed for Sharon Hospital. I think you're looking same worksheet for New Vans Health.
Yes.
You can't do that because that's, New Vans is not, it's not a, it's a, it's a system. It's not all patient service revenue. I think we had a question on that and answered it. New Vans is a system of multiple, of seven hospitals, including like New York hospitals. It doesn't have another entities, right? There's other entities in it like physician group or B N A, so it doesn't lend itself to that financial worksheet?
Ms. File, was, was anything submitted that was sort of akin to that, that you're asking to have updated?
Um, no, we are, so it kind of was in line, say, in line with my questioning before. Um, if Dr. Murphy is basically Sharon Hospital, oh, sorry, rather, New Vans Health backing up Sharon Hospital in any kind of financial way, it's kind of what we were really looking for.
So can you complete this question at S H zero zero two two four? We actually offered the audited financial statements for New Vans. We provided those and we explained that we couldn't provide, we couldn't prepare a financial worksheet for New Vans as a system, but that is the nature of the, of, of, of what that entity is.
Could you repeat your page? I'm sorry.
Zero zero two two four.
And again, just for the record, that's Attorney Boyle speaking.
All right, yes.
I see it. Thank you. Um, okay. So Steve or Dan don't have any other questions on, related to that. I'm going to move on to, uh, continue on.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Um, so what was the labor and delivery staffing like in the past three years? So for example, how many physicians, nurses, et cetera?
So the, the staffing has changed a bit in the past three years, but I'll, I'll share with you what our core staffing model is. And then let me know if you have further questions. On any given day, what we have are two nurses on the unit. We have an obstetrician, we have a pediatrician, we have a full O R team with an anesthesiologist. That's what we need on any given day to care for the patients on the unit. Also have a unit coordinator and then management, but that's the, the base model. Are you looking for that or are you looking for the number of staff that we've had in each of those categories?
Kind of both. Um, so I do have one follow up question for that though. So based on what you said, how many days out of the year would you say approximately has Sharon Hospital worked understaffed without a full team that you had just described?
We don't typically, we work understaffed. Our minimum staffing for nursing is two, and we have to have at least one of those other providers on to be able to have patients. So that's our core staffing model. That's what we have. We do have contingency plans. Should we not have a pediatrician or nurses in, we wouldn't be able to take care of patients. So that would include having patients go to other facilities. We haven't had to implement that in the past three years.
Um, and then back to then the other question, the other side of the same question. The numbers basically of physicians, nurses for the labor and delivery department.
When we look at, I'll start with the pediatricians. We have had four consistent pediatricians covering the pediatric call for the prior three years to our, through a community group and to our New Vans Health providers. The obstetricians, we, we have our one obstetrician that's in the New Milford office and then Sharon OB GYN. The Sharon OBG, the number of Sharon OB GYN providers doing call has changed a bit over the years. We did, at the time that we filed this application, we did have two Sharon OB GYN providers sharing in the call coverage. I should say OB providers sharing in the call coverage with the one New Milford provider. After we filed the application, another OB GYN from Sharon will be joining the call schedule and then Dr. Schweitzer joined the group. So that increased from three providers sharing all coverage to five at that time.
So would you say from the past three years to current, the staffing has remained relatively neutral, same?
It, it's been tenuous and I, I'm sorry, I did misspeak when I just explained the, um, the OB situation. I gave, I added an extra OB. Um, we have four. And at the point when we filed the application, we only had one from Sharon OB and one from New Milford. So they were sharing call between the two of them. Um, so fluctuated between two and four. But it, it, you know, it's, it's tenuous and it's not easy to fill call schedules. And, and I'll share when we, when we look at pediatrics, although we've had four consistent pediatricians over the past many years. I've recently had to reach out to other pediatric groups such as Children's Medical Group and the provider because we have had days not scheduled where we thought we wouldn't have coverage. So I, we've been looking for more additional providers to help cover that schedule. So it's, it's not easy to put this together and we know that what the repercussions are if we have holes in that schedule because we can't care for patients without that core staffing.
Ms. McCullough, you, you sort of, you're, you became garbled, you're recording when you were describing the, the, um, the other providers you've reached out to. Can you just name those? I think, I think, yeah, I think you said Connecticut Children's and maybe one or two others.
Connecticut Children's Medical Group. We did put a per diem agreement in place with them in the case that our four providers aren't able to cover. So we had a backup plan. Uh, that is all that we have in place. Also reached out to a community pediatrician that is located in Litchfield County to see what their interest was. We did not end up moving forward. There, there was an interest at this time to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then my next question is where do the current OB physicians at Sharon Hospital have privileges?
Uh, so I believe when we look at Sharon OB GYN, that their privileges are only at Sharon Hospital, but they can confirm that with you. And our New Vans Health, um, OB GYN group, they definitely Sharon Hospital, maybe Danbury Hospital. I'm not a hundred percent sure. No, I'm, I'm told, no, they do not have privileges at Danbury, just Sharon Hospital.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my last question, it has to do back to, um, what Dr. Murphy had said. So my question was originally, um, has New Vans Health had any issues recruiting for labor and delivery at other New Vans Health facilities? He indicated yes, um, in New York. And then my follow up question was why, um, why, why is New Vans Health having issues with recruiting efforts at Sharon Hospital if they're not having issues with any other Connecticut facilities?
Did you repeat the last part of that question again? I'm sorry.
Sure. Um, so the question is why is New Vans Health having issues with recruiting for Sharon Hospital if they're not having issues with any other Connecticut facilities, only New York?
So it's a, it's a different model between Connecticut and New York. First of all, the, the New York facilities are all employee, employee based. And then the Connecticut OB GYNs are private practice. So New Vans isn't responsible for staffing the practices. Hospital wide and nationwide, we are having issues with any nursing staffing, especially on labor and delivery units. So it's, it's kind of comparing apples to oranges regarding the recruitment. And the other also determines, or another aspect that adds to it is, is volume. Volume plays a big part as to whether people will, physicians will work in an area or not because the lower the volume can indicate a whole bunch of things depending on where you are in your career. So there are a lot of aspects that go into whether people are having a difficult time recruiting or not for a specific area or a specific hospital.
Thank you.
So is that all the questions you have for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. I just have, I just have a couple of follow up attorney.
Okay.
All right, um, based on the applicant's experience in labor delivery, what, how many, if this proposal was approved, how many cases per year would you expect of emergency deliveries at Sharon Hospital?
Well, based on what we have discussed with facilities that have closed their labor and delivery units and we'll use New Milford as an example, um, none. We believe that with proper planning and communication, uh, that, that patients will have birth plans in place. Could there be a chance that, you know, that there is a delivery? There could, it, it would be rare is what we are anticipating. As we've mentioned a few times today, New Milford Hospital has had their labor and delivery unit closed. As we've mentioned a few times today, New Milford Hospital has had their labor and delivery unit closed for, I think we've said almost 10 years now with zero emergency deliveries. Because really it's about the, the pre-planning, the birth plan that's put in place in advance of the time that the patient's ready to deliver.
Okay. Um, and I think you had said you currently, is it currently you have four OB providers? OB GYN providers?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So if this proposal was approved and you were to lose some of them, they might move, possibly and stuff, how would that affect other women's health services at the, at the hospital? Are there other services that might require kind of gynecological, are those type of surgical or services or things like that? Would you have enough coverage with, would there be access to the, those type of services? Or would that be also be reduced?
No, so our intention is to maintain, um, pre and postnatal, we're talking about the OB population, pre and postnatal care in the community. Again, we do hope that we can continue to partner with Sharon OB GYN. And, uh, just to clarify, there are additional providers within that group that do not provide OB call coverage that do, um, provide, uh, care in that office. But we do hope to continue to partner with them to provide services in the community. And if not, um, we will work within our own NuVance Health to be able to provide those services in the Sharon community.
And, um, what type of specialties would you have? Are you targeting when you're saying you, you're going to work within NuVance Health to bring those over?
Well, I was referring to providers, um, OB GYN providers.
But you're saying right now that you're already having a difficulty recruiting them for current, but you, you would be able to do that after termination?
Yeah, so, so we have NuVance Health providers that, um, are in a New Milford office. And we have other, um, OB GYN providers in other communities, um, within NuVance Health. And again, we, we are partnering with, hope to continue to partner with Sharon OB GYN and maintain service in, services in that community. We have had conversations with providers in that group on their intentions. I'm confident that we will have an OB GYN president, presence in the Sharon community. But if not, um, we will need to come up with other ways to cover that. We could use our, we, we could have, uh, providers from our New Milford office come to Sharon on certain days of the week. We do that with other specialties. Um, we could have providers from other communities come to Sharon as well and kind of share and some of that. It, it's difficult to recruit to Sharon independently especially when there is a private group in that, in that community because there's only so much volume to go around. Um, and we see this in other specialties as well. But when we recruit providers to some of our larger communities and, um, create a model where that provider can serve various communities, um, sharing their time, that, that works better because now you have the volume, those providers are productive and you're meeting the needs of the community. So there's different models we can look at and, and we can implement, some we could implement readily. But again, the decision, uh, for Sharon OB GYN and where they're going to go and each of those individual providers, that, that decision lies with them, um, but our planning is dependent on, um, what they decide to do.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll say, Attorney Chuka.
Thank you. Um, now, Ms. Viella and, uh, Ms. McLaughlin, you, you had, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Attorney Tucci, did you have any follow-up questions you wanted to ask of your witnesses?
Uh, yes, thank you, Attorney Chuka. Just very briefly, um, I, I'd like to just direct a few questions to you, Dr. Hoover, if you, if you, if you would. Doctor, you've been, um, asked by OH, staff, OHS staff, uh, you and Ms. McCullough, a lot of questions about, the potential if labor and delivery services cease at Sharon Hospital, uh, the potential of, uh, the need to cover, um, uh, labor and delivery emergently through the emergency department. You recall all those questions you've been asked? What I want to ask you is based on your 20-plus years of clinical experience, am I correct that the vast majority of patients who, um, uh, are experienced of pregnancy and, and, and as part of their pregnancy, obviously need to have a birthing plan? Do, are they typically followed, uh, by and receive care by an OB GYN for, for the, for those services?
Yes.
So there is a physician-patient relationship that exists with the patient who is pregnant and an OB GYN, a physician, private practice provider. That's the typical model.
Typical model.
And is it your experience that when, um, a situation may arise where that patient has a concern or perhaps thinks that there may be an emergent situation? How does that, what is the first step that that patient typically takes in your experience?
Because if they call, they call their provider to see what direction they should, they should take, and when I say direction, I mean what they should do. Um, are their symptoms consistent with a problem? Are their consist, are their symptoms consistent with something that can be evaluated in the office? Um, so typically your counseling is, if you have a question regarding the pregnancy, call us.
When you say their provider, you're talking about you, right? OB GYN physicians.
Correct.
Um, and in, in your experience, um, when, uh, when, when and if you receive that kind of call, would your first line of advice to a patient be to go to an emergency department at a hospital that didn't offer labor and delivery services?
No, unless it is an emergency room situation, which means it's usually non-opcietrical.
What do you mean by that?
You break your leg, please go to the emergency room, don't come see me.
Okay, understood. Can you take a look at this article, please? Which is Exhibit B that was attached to your prefile testimony? Is that, you recall reviewing that article as part of your preparation?
Yes.
And is that, uh, a, a more recent example of an article that talks about quality standards with respect to, um, volume thresholds?
Yes.
Does that refresh your memory about the source that you were looking for?
Yes. Yes.
And just for the record, can you read the title of that article?
"Rural Hospital Administrators' Beliefs About Safety, Financial Viability, and Community Need for Offering Abcentric Care."
Thank you. And for the record, that appears, uh, at SH zero, zero, four, four, seven.
Thank you. Attorney Tucci, do you have any further questions?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. I would like to, I, I think there are only a few questions for the intervenors, so I'd like to get through those. Then we could take a five-minute break and go right into, um, closing arguments and then we'll take, uh, whatever public comment, uh, may still be lingering towards the end. So Attorney Viella, I'm sorry, Ms. Viella, and, uh, do you have any, any questions for the intervenors?
Yes. Uh, you're muted.
Which witness would you like to, uh, have come to the table here?
Uh, Dr. Morton, please. Okay, um, so the first question, uh, discuss, uh, the first question is regarding maternal death rates. Um, I believe it was you that had said that Sharon Hospital that there are no, have been, there have been no maternal death rates or deaths since you've been working there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, do you happen to know the maternal death rates at the other hospitals that Sharon Hospital is proposing to transfer patients to?
No.
Okay.
I know, I know they've happened, but I can't give you the numbers.
Okay. Um, and then my next question is how many babies have you delivered in the past year at Sharon Hospital or approximately?
You know, I, I,
Dr. Morton specifically or, or his practice? I'm sorry.
Um, both. It's awesome. Both.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I, I, I probably deliver more babies than anybody else, um, but not because I'm better. It's just the, the way it works out with my practice. Honestly, we have four fantastic providers. And I think the numbers went down from two fifteen, two fifteen the last two years to like one seventy-six predicted for this year, um, for reasons I've mentioned. Um, and I would just only have to wager a guess, I probably delivered eighty or ninety, um, ninety babies. Yeah.
Um, and so what type of emergency situations have you experienced, uh, that the emergency department would need to be trained for?
I don't think that they can handle most of the emergencies that I've dealt with. I, I don't think i- it would be safe or it makes any sense. So I can break them down one by one. I could just, let, let me just pick out shoulder dystocia. Um, and I'll make it a little personal, but I can make everything personal because every one of my patients is my family and every one of my patients, everything about them matters. Uh, that said, uh, my third child weighed seven and a half pounds. We had all our babies at Sharon Hospital, my partners delivered my babies, seven and a half pound baby. I think she might be watching now, her name is Sophie. And she delivered and my new partner who had four years of OB residency under her belt and several years in private practice. And that was our third child. We knew nothing about risk for this child because it was a normal pregnancy. And when she came out, you get this sign called the turtle sign and all there is is head and nothing else. And I left my wife's hand and I delivered her. That patient easily can deliver in our emergency room. You cannot train an emergency room physician to deliver that baby and have a good outcome. And it's not just the baby that you can hurt or lose. Like actually Dr. Cavali mentioned, a shoulder dystocia in a home birth. It's the mother because there's tremendous potential trauma to that mother physically, lacerations, hemorrhage, et cetera. If you want specifics, I can go through twenty or thirty different instances that there's no way they can handle. And it's not just them, it's the things they need to do and the resources that won't be there. I have to take NuVance at their word. Their plan was no twenty-four-seven surgery. I can't tell you how many times I have the OR there ready for an emergency I'm anticipating for a retained placenta. That mom doesn't have hours, they don't even often have more than a few minutes before you're in deep trouble. They go into DIC, they may not ever stop clotting, uh, start clotting, um, dropped heart rate. Sometimes I have to do an emergency C-section. Somebody who comes in at the breach is there. You can't deliver a baby breach unless you're willing to take on major risk of lifelong trauma or death of that baby. Uh, we've had babies present fully dilated. Let me just mention a few that have come in. A patient came in with a ruptured uterus. I got her into the OR, the uterus was ruptured widely and the placenta was completely separated. What does the ER doctor do with that patient? You just watch the baby die. If you're even listening, and are you skilled to listen to that baby? What are you going to do? And, and how long is it going to take to get an ambulance in and get them somewhere else? And let's not forget my office is across the street. I can't tell you how many times my RN who used to work in the OR, we have an incredible staff in my office that's been there for decades, has driven a patient over to the hospital while we called and told them to get ready for an stat C-section because the heart rate was down about half of what it should be on a baby. And we saved every one of those babies and we saved every one of those mothers. And I don't know of a, a bad outcome because of a baby delivering at Sharon Hospital. And I know of many bad outcomes that would have happened if we weren't there. And my patient that calls, uh, you know, from Hotchkiss and she's in an emergency, she calls me, I have no maternity unit, I have no facilities. I, it's easy, come to the hospital. We've never had an issue. There is no answer for that patient. That whole entire, um, industrial complex of fantastic families will have no safe answers in emergencies. I, I'm going to go on and on, I'm sorry, you should cut me off and, and I'll just keep going at examples. I'd love to tell, tell you about it because that's, that's the nuts and bolts of this. Uh, you know, so my offices are ninety-nine to ninety-seven percentile for patient care unsatisfactory in the country, my two offices. We're not joking about this. I came to the best guys that I heard of that take care of patients so that when I'm off call, I wouldn't have to worry about the safety of my patients. I was referred up here by a nurse.
Dr. Morton, you're, you're, you're going off.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I hear you.
She, she was only asking about what sorts of emergencies you've experienced that you don't think an emergency department such as Sharon Hospitals would be trained for?
Okay, so let me listen.
I, I was going to say, I think you've answered the question and, and if you haven't, I, I think, one of the other doctors for Save Sharon Hospital, um, has provided that. If you want to just list a few more, you're free to do that, but please don't go off on another narrative.
Thank you. Yeah. So, um, patient delivers and there's postpartum hemorrhage. I didn't really expound on that. Every single patient hemorrhages post-delivery. Every single patient hemorrhages post-delivery. Huge amounts of blood. Our job is to stop that quickly and avoid the disaster that will befall that patient if it's not managed by a skilled, trained, very experienced obstetrician. And I've had countless patients that have had placentas retained and those placentas better be, be removed very quickly. Sometimes the hemorrhage is so severe, I literally, excuse me, reach my hand in there and get that placenta out instantly. Sometimes I feel like I have a little time, so, uh, and, and if it's been in there a little bit, I, I, I pull the OR, they're sort of there and ready in case it doesn't come out. I remove that placenta in the OR. An ER physician tries to do that, they can easily rupture the uterus, leave fragments of the placenta, cause infection, traumatize the mother. It's endless. And then when you just talk about the lacerations afterwards, we've had patients, we've had to get back to the OR. And if you leave them unrepaired and try to ship in, in an ambulance, wow, I mean, so they're bleeding, they're stressed, they're upset. And that's a minor issue on a relative scale, although sometimes it isn't. And then you take the baby, the baby that's got, got a dropped heart rate. I watched the tracing, I wouldn't go back to my office.
Dr. Dr. You, you, you're really going far afield of, of the question. If, if you can narrow it to just state specifically what sort of issues you think could come up, that would be fine.
Yeah.
If I have to cut you off.
Mr. Hearing Officer, Mr. Zuka, if I may. Mr. Zuka, if I may, this is your third instruction to the witness. He is not going to listen to you. I respectfully ask you to conclude his narrative that's going to go on for another twenty-five minutes if you let it.
I will listen. I will be more concise. I promise.
Okay. So Attorney Viella, I did it again, Ms. Viella.
I'll take it again.
Uh, do you have any other questions for Dr. Morton?
Um, yes, I just have two more quick, uh, questions. Um, so you had given us the number of, um, babies that you've delivered in the past year at Sharon Hospital. Approximately, how many of those, uh, deliveries would you consider to be one of those emergency situations that you have just described?
Every one. Every one because of the postpartum hemorrhage. Every one. They bleed heavily after delivery. An ER doctor, you asked this question about the ER doctor, what if he's dealing with a code? What if he's dealing with a, a, a patient with a severe trauma? That ER doctor can't even get near the patient. They're understaffed in our ER right now. I've heard that from an ER physician. Um, I, I, I'm sorry.
We're, again, we're, we're straying a field of the question.
And then my last question is, um, so it was actually, um, asked for the applicant, but then was suggested that we, that I ask you. Um, so where do the current OB physicians at Sharon OB GYN have privileges aside from Sharon Hospital?
Yeah, so that's a good, a great question. Um, yeah, so we had this transformation, so, um, planned meetings with, with Dr. Herco, who was the CEO up until recently during this announcement and up until just the last few months with Christina.
And that's not responsive to the question. The question was where did the doctors have privileges? That should be a very easy factual question to answer that doesn't require fifteen minutes of introduction.
Okay, I have privileges only at Sharon Hospital. My partners and I were asked to get privileges at Charlotte or somewhere else. And, uh, I think one or two of my partners got the privileges in case on any given day, we couldn't staff the unit, which was always mentioned to us by Christina and Dr. Herco, it could happen at any time, starting in last fall to winter.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so let's take a five minute break. We could do um, closing arguments, we'll do, we'll just run through the late files again and then we'll do public comment. Uh, if those individuals are still with us at the end. So we'll come back at eight thirty-eight. And we will start with Attorney Knog and then do, um, Attorney Tucci for closing.
Thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. We are nearing the end of this hearing. It's a hearing regarding Vassar Health Connecticut. That is DBA Sharon Hospital. Uh, their application for termination of labor and delivery services. Um, we are going to pick up with closing arguments. And then we may, uh, go through the late files and then have maybe a few more people from the public speak. So, um, Attorney Knog and Attorney Tucci. Uh, to the best of your ability, let's, let's try to keep this brief. There's, there's been extensive testimony, extensive, uh, comment by, by you as well. So, um, there's a lot in the record that I'm going to have to digest. Um, and uh, with that, I'll, I will turn it over to you, Attorney Knog. You can start.
Thank you. Uh, what, what we're involved, what we have involved here is life and death. Uh, and we have, uh, in our petition to intervene, gone through all the factors, all the statutory factors, one by one, and listed out, uh, a summary of all the evidence that we had, that we have submitted, uh, that support denial under each of those factors. So in providing a summary here tonight, uh, I would also refer you to the, uh, petition to intervene because it has a much more detailed discussion of each of the factors, uh, and why this should be denied. Uh, now, but it is a life and death, uh, application. Uh, people are going to die, uh, if this is approved, it wouldn't otherwise die. The applicant, uh, uh, the, uh, Congressman Johanna Hayes has put in a letter here and she mentions that, uh, that her big concern is that, uh, the maternal death rate in the, in the US went from ten point three deaths per hundred thousand in nineteen ninety-one to twenty eighteen, twenty point eight in, in twenty fourteen. This, uh, maternal death rate is the highest in the developed world and unfortunately it keeps getting higher. Uh, and that, we have to avoid that. And the way that we avoid that is that we know that when we close down maternal health services in rural communities, uh, that results in the, uh, in the various problems that you've outlined on page twenty-seven of your proposed decision in the Windham matter. Uh, and so, oh, not only has, uh, Johanna Hayes highlighted that, but also the governor and Senator Blumenthal and other leaders, uh, who, who make clear that we need to put uh, access to care and quality of care ahead of saving money. And then, and that we need to make sure that this, uh, maternity care is not terminated at Sharon Hospital. Now, the key concerns that, that I've just outlined are much more, uh, applicable here as compared with Windham. Because in Windham, they claimed they had, they had under a hundred people when the unit was last opened, a hundred deliveries per year when the unit was last open. And they claimed that they were unable to operate safely and that they were unable uh, to find any doctors who wanted to staff the, uh, the, the facility. Uh, just the opposite is here. Now, at the last, uh, back and forth, there was some suggestion there have to be five hundred cases in order to be a quality unit. But the Nuance has stated clearly that they, that quality is not an issue here. We know that the ACOG, uh, survey showed that this was an outstanding unit. And you've heard lots of testimony from patients and from, from others that show how great this, this, uh, service is that, uh, that, that, that it exists at the maternity unit at, uh, Sharon Hospital. And it continues to be great despite the various problems in, in, uh, in the threatened closure. It continues to be great. And furthermore, the distances here are much longer than the distances that were involved in Windham where nevertheless the distances were deemed to be, uh, very material. Uh, the Windham travel distances were twenty-six to forty-three minutes from the hospital. And here we're talking about, uh, forty minutes to an hour to the nearest hospital from, from Sharon Hospital. Now, they, they put in some charts and, uh, and, and they talk about distances, certain people from Connecticut who went to Sharon, who lived closer to, uh, some other hospital than Sharon. And so a certain percentage of the people from Connecticut, uh, live closer, but another percentage of the people in, in, from, uh, who are delivering at Sharon live further away from those hospitals. They may be further away even than Sharon is from those other hospitals. So the, the distances are longer and, uh, the travel times, not only are the distances longer, but the travel times are worse because unlike the, uh, uh, Windham situation, we're talking about the mountains here. There, there's hills and, and heavy winter weather all the time. And that makes travel in the winter particularly, uh, hazardous and mu- much more likely to take longer to, for a pregnant woman to get to the hospital in an emergency. And we've, we've submitted and, and you had referred previously to literature that says that travel times of more than twenty minutes by car are associated with a, a, a increased risk of mortality and other adverse outcomes in pregnant women at, at term. And we also need, know that if a C-section is needed, it's got to be done within thirty minutes. And that's not going to be possible if someone, uh, is up in Sharon and needs to go to Danbury Hospital, which is an hour away. Uh, and, uh, you heard, uh, I know that Dr. Mortman was answering too long in the last, uh, round. But he's gone through, if you, if you look at his testimony and you listen to what he's, and you recall what he said in the summary of his testimony, and then again just now. There are so many things that could kill women if they come in with an ectopic. There's nothing that they could be, that can be done for them if they come in with an ectopic except to put them in an ambulance and pray. There's not going to be anybody to do, to do the surgery that's needed. And that's true of all these other problems that related to birth and also other gynecological emergencies. There's not going to be call. Their plan is to, is to not, is to save money by not paying the doctors, the pediatricians and the, uh, obstetricians and the surgeons and the, uh, uh, anesthesiologists. They're going to save that three, that, that, that money that they're talking about saving, they're going to be doing that by cutting the call. So the cutting the call is not going to only affect the ability to deliver babies, but it's also going to affect all those other emergency situations that could present, such as the ectopic. And those, those women are going to be out of luck. They're just, we, the only thing to do would be to pray for them that somehow they would make it to, uh, Danbury Hospital or wherever they're sent uh, after a lengthy transport. Uh, but in fact, that's, but that's why the closure of maternity services at rural hospitals has such a drastic, drastic impact on the, uh, on the, uh, maternal death rate and of course al- also on the fetal death rate. Now, another difference, uh, with Windham was that they offered to provide free ambulance transfers to women. In the last section, they, they talked about who would pay for the ambulances. And there was suggestion that maybe the ambulances would be paid for by insurance. But, uh, Windham had determined that at least in a, a, a big subset of cases, they wouldn't be paid for by insurance. And they offered to pay for ambulances, but that's not something that has been thrown in here. But even if it had been, it wouldn't be enough to solve the problems that, uh, abandoning this quality care, uh, OB-GYN pediatric service in, in, uh, in Sharon is unwarranted. And a matter of, that will result in death, uh, if it's approved. Uh, now, I want to talk about poor people. We know that in Sharon, there's some well-off people and in this area. But, uh, forty, with respect to the maternity service, there's a disproportionate number of Medicaid of poor people who are, who are the ones who are taking advantage of the maternity service. In particular, forty-eight percent of the maternity patients are Medicaid as of twenty twenty-one. And additional numbers are uninsured patients. So these people in particular, they're the ones that don't go to doctors. They're the ones as it is. And if there's no doctors here or just somebody coming up from New Milford once a week, they're, they're going to be much more likely to not get prenatal, postnatal care as well as, uh, not, as well as to be impacted by the unavailability of the hospital for delivery purposes. Now let's talk about volume. We know that prior to the announcement in twenty eighteen that it, that it would be, that the, uh, uh, hospital, uh, would be, uh, closing its maternity unit. That was the earlier announcement. There was a volume of two hundred and forty-six to two hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, that was made, that announcement was made despite a pledge by Health Quest to maintain the service for at least three years. The community thought that it had averted a problem, uh, and then, uh, the volume started to go up. And then, uh, there were, there were the announcements first to the staff and then to the, uh, public that they were planning to close, uh, the unit, even though they had, uh, originally said in the CON that they would not close the unit. Uh, now they, we talked about, uh, we talked about recruitment. They didn't recruit any new GO, OB-GYNs, they didn't try to recruit any OB-GYNs. And when the, when the group recruited an OB-GYN who was an outstanding doctor who had been co-chair down in New York, what did they do? They refused to even support the, uh, the recruitment by a income guarantee that had been, uh, had been promised. So, and what did they do about nurses? They, they told the nurses that, uh, you know, they were going to, the unit was going to close. And they tried, they talked to a key nurse about relocating to Danbury. Uh, and then they sent that letter to the patients stating falsely that the unit would close by spring or summer of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and they, they, when there were problems or potential problems with non-coverage of, uh, OB or uh, pediatric or nurses, they, they never offered to provide any nurses from other Nuance facilities. And nevertheless, we were able to keep the unit open through the heroic efforts of, of Dr. Mortman and Dr. Calvi and their groups. Uh, so, uh, we think that, uh, it's clear that, uh, uh, they have, they, there is the ability to recruit people. Dr. Mortman has talked to the nurses and, uh, the nurses, uh, have indicated to him that they, uh, at least some of them are likely to want to come back if the unit's going to remain open. And, uh, I guess the hospital never did that, but, but Dr. Mortman has and he's, he's ready to, and he's, uh, optimistic that he's going to be able to maintain the necessary, uh, physicians and nurses to maintain this as a quality unit if it's, uh, allowed, if it's ordered to be kept open. There's no reason to believe that it won't be. Unlike the, unlike the, uh, Windham situation where they just closed it down because nobody was there, the doctors moved out. Uh, now, we also know that, uh, there's been a, a, uh, pandemic-induced, uh, move of young families up to Sharon. So it's reasonable to think that, uh, if this unit is to be kept open, that they, that, that their real reason for trying to close this unit, that is to save three million dollars, uh, will, will be, uh, uh, unnecessary because as more people come up, as people have come up from New York, uh, the potential for increasing volume is there and they haven't promoted. They've done nothing to promote the unit. They didn't say, hey, we have a five-star hospital with the best, best unit that ACOG ever, uh, ever reviewed. They didn't say that. They didn't tell the public at all about that. They didn't promote the, they didn't promote the unit. And if they did promote the unit, that would be a way to reduce the, uh, reduce or eliminate any deficit that they, they may have. Now, it is claimed that three million to be, be, will be saved. And for various reasons, we've questioned the accuracy of that, of that, uh, 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 computation. We know that they're paying too much for the nurses and they're saying they're going to save that money by, by closing. But they, they will also save that money by not closing because those contract nurses will be turned into regular uh, employed nurses if only, uh, they make clear that they're going to keep it all, that they're going to keep it open. And on the other hand, if they close, uh, th- this unit, they're going to find, what are they going to find? They're going to find that people who, young people who might have been become part of the Sharon Hospital commit, community, they may go elsewhere, they may be unhappy. They're, they're, they may lose volume because people are unhappy. We know that people in this town are very, and this area are very unhappy. And, uh, you know, I should, I should mention also that, uh, they talk about travel time, uh, for Connecticut. They talk about volumes from Connecticut and they asked all a bunch of questions and showed some tables, which just talked about Connecticut. And so they leave out completely travel time from these places in New York where most, where, where almost half their patients come from. They leave out, they leave out the fa- the fact that these New York State patients are also part of what, of what they're providing. And, uh, that, uh, travel, the travel times for them, uh, excessive travel times to them is a major problem as well. So the three million dollars, uh, we, we question whether that's a valid. Uh, but even if it is valid, even if they would save three million dollars by closing this unit, it just, it's not a reason to allow them to close it. The, keeping this unit open is too important to the people. We know that Mr. Tucci emphasized that this article that they put in said that many of these, uh, rural hospitals operated OB even though it was very unprofitable. We know that it's not unusual to run OBs that run a, a small loss. And so the question is, is it better to lose a few people and have a few people die and have a few babies, uh, uh, die or re- suffer from morbidities? Or is it better to find another way to, uh, uh, save that money? Uh, we, we're talking about a hospital that has.
Great, Knog, I'm, I'm, we're going on very long now.
Okay.
I ask you to keep it brief. If, if you can summarize any remaining comments you might have.
Okay.
I would appreciate it.
I will. Uh, we, uh, this is a hospital that had, uh, two hundred million, two hundred and fifty million dollar increase in net worth in the last reported fiscal year and has one point seven billion dollars in, uh, in net assets. Three million dollars is just a rounding error for this hospital and it's too important to the community. And so what we say is this. This is our, this is our key pitch, that closing this for money isn't, isn't warranted. And furthermore, work, work with us. Yes, you need to find ways to reduce your deficit, but work with us. Find ways to, uh, deal with this problem of profitability other than closing the unit. And some of those things are marketing, some of the things are, uh, And some of those things are marketing, some of the things are, Maria Horn is gonna be the co-chair of the Finance Committee of the Legislature, and Maria Horn has said that she will work with the hospital to try to improve their reimbursement and, and financial assistance from the state, and, and work with Senator Blumenthal and Joanna Hayes, and they're all interested. And the governor indicated that he's interested. And we heard Maria Horn say the governor's interested. That's the way to address the problem that it would be better if we got a little more money for rural health care and maternity units as opposed to closing them and having people die as a result. And so, and then, you know, Dr. Murphy has said he's tried everything, but I think that those are ways that he hasn't tried, that he should try, and in the meantime, he shouldn't be allowed to close the unit and sentence a bunch of women and babies to a bad outcome.
Thank you, Dr. Attorney Knott. I'm going to transfer it over to Attorney Tucci now for his closing argument. And Attorney Tucci, I'll allow, given the length of Attorney Knott's closing, I'm going to give you a little leeway to, you know, go a little bit longer than, than, than brief.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So first, let me start by saying thank you to you here in Officer Chuka and to OHS staff. On behalf of our client, Sharon Hospital, we appreciate the extraordinary patients that you've shown us. We appreciate the extraordinary attention to detail that you have, that you have committed to this application, and we appreciate the level of seriousness and gravity that, that you have demonstrated in hearing the information that we've presented to you. OHS has a number of crucial decisions to make in this, in this application. The first determination that you need to make is, are you gonna decide this application based on facts, based on data, based on evidence? Or are you gonna decide this application based on fear, based on anecdote, based on personal attacks, and based on speculation? The second thing you need to decide is, are you going to make a decision about whether or not labor and delivery services should continue in Litchfield County at Sharon Hospital? Or are you gonna decide whether or not there's a maternal health care crisis in the United States? Or whether or not a White House paper on how to improve maternal health care is what you should be, is what you should be looking at? The fiction that you've been presented with is what, the third question that you need to decide is relates to the closing down of labor and delivery at rural hospitals. You've been presented with the fiction that if, if labor and delivery closes at rural hospitals, it will result in, in, in a crisis in maternal health care and a lack of access to maternal health care. What some article says about a labor and delivery unit at a hospital in Wyoming when the next care center is 100 miles away has no relevance to Litchfield County, to Sharon Hospital, and to fact that, and to the fact that there are five hospitals within the, either in the service area or immediately adjacent to the service area that have labor and delivery services and that have the capacity to absorb the low volume that exists in, in the marketplace, not only in the last several years, but as the facts have demonstrated for the past 10 to 15 years. And the final thing you need to decide is, are you gonna re-decide the Wyndham application or are you gonna decide the Sharon Hospital application? I'm not gonna go into any detail about why the Wyndham application has no relevance here, as, as you have already indicated, Attorney Chuka. But the, the main thing that really needs to be pointed out for the record is that with respect to the Wyndham Hospital situation, there, the hospital was a provider of OB-GYN services in a clinic-based practice that doesn't exist in Sharon Hospital because Dr. Mortman and his practice exists, and other private OB-GYN practitioners exist who provide those very services and will continue to provide those services and deliver babies at Charlotte Hungerford, at Danbury Hospital, or at hospitals in New York or across the border in Massachusetts, all of which have the capacity to absorb that volume. And finally, I think, and most crucially, the decision you have to make is, will you be true to the mission of OHS, which is to adapt and approve comprehensive data-driven strategies that promote access to quality of care, but also control costs and avoid unnecessary duplication of services, which is what we have here, that make healthcare unaffordable for the people of Connecticut? Really what you have to decide is, as an agency charged with regulating healthcare in Connecticut, what do we want the future of healthcare to look like in northwestern Connecticut? Not only with respect to labor and delivery services, but what is the proper role for a healthcare resource like Sharon Hospital as it fits into a larger picture of healthcare in Litchfield County to make sure that there's reasonable access to a wider variety and array of health services locally, where those local services make sense, and then on a referral basis where it makes sense to refer those services to hospitals that have the necessary resources, the necessary equipment, and the necessary talent to deal with those tertiary care and, and higher acuity situations? So the question is, how are you gonna carry out that mission in the context of this application? And really, we go back to where we started. The fir-, the, the, what you need to look at, and, and what, what I think you've already recognized here in Officer Chuka, is that this application needs to be based on not speculation, not anecdotes, not, not, not horror stories, but let's actually look at what the statutory criteria are. And we know that the key statutory criteria that, that apply to any CON situation, whether it's an expansion of a service or a contraction of a service, is we need to do an analysis of need and utilization. That's pillar number one. We need to do an, an analysis of cost effectiveness. That's pillar number two. And we need to do an analysis of, of access to quality of care. That's pillar number three. So I want to go briefly go through those three pillars with you and compare the evidence that you heard from the applicant with the speculation as against the speculation and fear that you heard from the intervener. With respect to need and utilization, you, you've heard the data, you've seen the data, you've heard the testimony that shows that there's a 10-plus-year history of underutilization of labor and delivery services at Sharon Hospital. You've seen that there's not a projection that future demand will increase. There's, there's no data that you have that shows that there's gonna be an increase in demand for labor and delivery services in Litchfield County. To the contrary, all data points to a decrease in demand. No matter what the applicants say, Sharon Hospital can't manufacture women of childbearing age who may need labor and delivery services. That's, that's, that's just not something that's within the realm of reason to do. With respect to utilization, the numbers are clear. That, that there has never been, in the last 15 years of data that we have, if you look at the average utilization for labor and delivery services at Sharon Hospital, there has never been a year in which the average has broken 250 cases. And we know that half or more of those cases come from New York State. And it is, it is a maximum of, of OHS's mission that your consideration is focused on, what is the need for Connecticut residents? What is the demand for Connecticut residents? We don't take into account what need and demand may be for residents who do not live in Connecticut. Now, we've heard also that with respect to this existing pool of demand that exists and utilization that exists in the marketplace, where are the patients going? What choices are available to them in the service area? The data show, we have presented data that show that on average, 40 to 45% of those patients who could, who live in the market in Connecticut and who could choose to go to Sharon Hospital, make choices to go elsewhere. And we presented you with facts and data that show reasons why they might do that. They live closer to other facilities than Sharon Hospital. Sharon Hospital is a Level One facility. More and more patients are choosing to go to higher-level facilities where there is the availability of a NICU and neonatologist in the event, in the event that there are complications that arise during labor and delivery. So let's look at what the speculation is that's been presented to you by the intervener. The speculation is that, well, despite what the historic data shows about lack of demand and low utilization, and despite what the future demand protect, projections show about trailing demand, a few people have moved up from New York, and, you know, they may have children, and so maybe that's a reason to keep the unit open. Maybe Sharon Hospital didn't try hard enough to attract more people to come to the unit. Think about that for a minute. We know that this has been a high-quality unit. We know that despite the challenges, Sharon Hospital has continued to provide high-level and high-quality gold standard care. But the data don't bear out that the demand is there for those services. No matter what Sharon Hospital has done, it has not resulted in any significant increase in the level of need or utilization or demand for those services. The intervener wants you to believe that it's Sharon Hospital's fault that that's happened. Again, think about the lack of logic to that position. The suggestion is that Sharon Hospital, which has maintained a, a high-quality unit, doesn't have any interest in keeping that unit going and making it as successful as possible if, if there's any reasonable way to do it. That in and of itself makes no sense. In terms of demand, what you've heard is, or need and utilization, you've heard, it doesn't really matter whether this service is financially viable. We demand that you keep this service in, in the area because it's a vital service. If that were the standard that applied to CONs, then I would respectfully suggest to you that OHS should approve Sharon Hospital to be a provider of open-heart surgery and percutaneous coronary intervention, because when a patient who lives in the Sharon service area presents in the emergency department with an acute myocardial infarction or heart attack, that patient shouldn't be transported to Danbury Hospital or another tertiary care hospital where that care can be provided. That's the logic that you're, that you've heard here today. The logic that you've heard here today is that regardless of whether there's sufficient demand to support the service, regardless of whether it's actually being utilized by the people sufficiently, by the people who live in the service area, keep that here because it's a vital service and, you know, a patient, you know, may need to be transported elsewhere in the event that they show up at the emergency department. So let's talk about that as, as a likely possibility of occurring. You've been presented with no data by the interveners that suggests in any form or fashion that that is an event that's likely to occur on any frequent basis. To the contrary, you've been prevent, you've been presented with evidence by Sharon Hospital that based on all of the clinical experience that we have, and based on our actual experience at New Milford Hospital, that when, at a community hospital, labor and delivery services are terminated, and when that decision is appropriately communicated to the, to the residents who live in the service area, to the OB-GYNs who practice in the service area, it is, it is, it is never occurred at New Milford Hospital.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Matushka, can you-
I told her how it's doing. I was going to the doctor tomorrow, and how is George? And she said he has some-
Mina, can you mute? Okay, thank you. Sorry, Attorney Tucci.
You, you, the evidence that you've heard is that in this situation that has not occurred in 10-plus years since New Milford Hospital terminated its labor and delivery services. This whole issue of transfers and whether it's safe and what the conditions are on the roads, all of those apply to any emergency situation that would be faced by a community hospital like Sharon. And you've heard evidence, despite all the fear-mongering that has been presented to you, that Sharon Hospital successfully transfers 300 patients a year to higher-acuity facilities when the, when the need arises to get those patients to centers where they need a higher level of care. So let's talk about cost effectiveness. Again, the evidence that you've heard, which has been unrefuted, is that the current unit operates at an operating deficit of $3 million a year. No economic justification has been offered to where it makes sense from a CON perspective to continue to maintain a service for which demand does not exist, that requires a hospital system to invest $3 million more than what it takes in to support that service. The evidence from the intervener that you hear is, cost doesn't matter. Whatever the cost is, we need to have this service in our community because that's the way it's always been. We recognize that change is not easy. We recognize that, that, that the historic role that Sharon Hospital has played is one that people value. We value it as well, which is why the hospital has proposed a transformation plan that will assure the viability of Sharon Hospital going forward in a way that allows it to provide the care that people need on a local basis, and then the care they need at a higher level at facilities that are close by. And, and I would suggest to you that, that, that is really the appropriate measure that you should be looking at, and that is the way you should be thinking about how is, what is the best model for care? What is the best platform for delivering care in northwestern Connecticut? You know, there's an old saying that doing hard things is hard. And we recognize that this is not an easy decision to make, and that it is hard to listen to the stories that we've heard today about potential complications and so forth. And it is hard to listen to community opposition, and it's hard to resist political pressure. But those aren't the factors that OHS is supposed to use to make decisions about CON applications. The statutory criteria are clear. I want to end by, by, by making one thing crystal clear that I think is a fundamental misconception that our clinical folks have addressed and that we've addressed through other witnesses, that really is the foundation of the intervener's opposition. You heard Dr. Mortman say that every case that he has handled inpatient at Sharon Hospital in the labor and delivery unit is an emergency. That testimony in and of itself is incredible. What he's really saying is that because we have a labor and delivery unit at Sharon Hospital, we have the resources here to take a patient to an operating room when that's necessary. We have the pediatricians here, we have all the resources here. That isn't the issue. If CO, if OHS determines that we have satisfied the statutory criteria that shows that it is no longer viable to maintain a labor and delivery service unit at Sharon Hospital, the patients who require the services of Dr. Mortman will be able to go to Charlotte Hungerford, or Danbury, or Fairview, or the hospitals in New York. And when, and those hospitals maintain full labor and delivery service units, and when those complications arise, because they have all those resources there, they will get the care they need. There's a, there's a complete difference between providing full-service labor and delivery care that Dr. Mortman described and not having a labor and delivery unit and determining what, whether, when, and how many emergency cases will show up in the emergency department at Sharon Hospital. The evidence that you've heard is unrefuted. There, the clinical evidence you heard is unrefuted, the actual experience evidence that New, at New Milford Hospital is unrefuted. If this is done properly, as it will be, there is little to no chance, because OB-GYNs will not direct their patients to a hospital where there isn't L and D service. They will direct them to a center where there is the appropriate care that those patients need. So again, this is not something that we're asking, that, that, this is not a decision that we came to easily. It's not something that we are asking for lightly. We're asking you to consider all of the evidence, all of the statutory criteria. And if you look at the evidence we have submitted to you, we respectfully suggest that it, it requires that the best model for delivery of, a decision that the- That the best model for delivery of, a decision that the best model for, for delivery of healthcare in Litchfield County. Is to make Sharon Hospital a strong and viable institution to deliver local healthcare locally. And to have labor and delivery services readily available at hospitals, other hospitals in the county or nearby for patients who need that service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Tucci. Um, I just wanted to address late files first. Um, in the interest of time, I am planning to. Export from the Zoom recording a transcript and then. Uh crafting an order based on that that I will issue tomorrow. With, I, I think there are only like three or four uh late file requests. And if there is anything that, that needs to be sort of uh. Ironed out in, in terms of, you know, what are, what is OHS looking for when they, when they are making this request? Uh that can be done either um through email or through uh written submissions. Um but I, I want to make sure that, that uh this is done in as easy a way as possible and. In my conversations with OHS staff, it seems like um that would be the most efficient way of dealing with it. So with that said, um there were. Four other people who had signed up earlier from the public who wanted to make public comment. I don't know if any of them are still available. Um if they are, we will. Uh take their comment now. That's Rachel Tuberville, Robert Reimer. Noah Cardo Spine and Rebecca Ridgeway. Um, so I'll start first with Rachel Tuberville. Is she still with us?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I uh.
And, and sorry, uh Ms. Tuberville, just to uh restate what I said earlier, please limit your, your comments to three minutes.
Okay, um, I um speaking in opposition of the closure of services at Sharon Hospital. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, I delivered my second son there unexpectedly. Uh, I'm, I have type one diabetes, so I'm considered a high risk pregnancy. So I was receiving care at another hospital with another practice, but um. When I was about thirty-four weeks pregnant, I woke up in the middle of the night and was hemorrhaging. And I called my regular OB doctor who instructed me to get to the closest hospital, which was Sharon Hospital. Um, I drove there with my two-year-old. Um, it was about eleven-thirty at night. And um I was alone and uh I went through the ER because I. Wasn't a patient there or anything and um they called the OBGYN who was there quickly. And um uh she let me know that I was having a placental abruption, which is an emergency situation. And I realized there's been a lot of talk about the unlikelihood of emergencies occurring like that. But it did happen to me, so it is possible. Um, and. Also, my baby was having heart decelerations. Um, and within moments, I was taken for an emergency C-section in the OR. Um, and my baby was born while I was having the surgery. Um, a NICU doctor from Vassar Hospital in Poughkeepsie came to transport my baby um to the NICU there, but. Um luckily, the, the OR was open and there was an on-call OBGYN. And an on-call pediatrician, you know, after hours. And in, my son is now four years old and has no health complications. And I was, had no health complications afterwards either. And I can only credit that to the fact that I was able to go to Sharon Hospital and receive those services without having to drive any additional time. To Danbury, Charlotte Hungerford, Vassar, wherever it would have just added time onto an already deadly situation. Um, so although everyone, I've heard it said quite a few times throughout this proceeding that. These emergent situations are unlikely and never happen, but they obviously can and do happen. Um, so I just wanted to share my story just to make it known that these things can occur and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Tuberville. Um, is Robert Reimer still with us?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Um, Noah Cardo's fine?
I think so.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll um, I'll try to keep this brief. Appreciate you offering this opportunity and thank you everyone for staying late. Um, I am also in firm opposition of closing labor and delivery at Sharon Hospital. I'm one of those people actually based across the border in New York State. Who relies on the services at Sharon Hospital because it is closest to where we live and because of its upstanding reputation. Um, my wife and I welcomed our daughter there a little over a year ago. Our experience was above and beyond expectations. We rushed to Sharon OBGYN uh so that my wife could be checked out after her water broke. We were lucky that when we were told to go to the hospital to be admitted, it was only a two to five minute drive away. Uh our nearest hospital beyond that is closer to like thirty to forty minutes away. Um, though in the end, everything worked out during a short labor, we had a scare with our daughter's heart rate that required our OB to prep the OR. For a possible emergency C-section and I shudder to think what would have happened had we not had the attentive care of the nurses there? Or had we been required to drive even just an additional fifteen to thirty minutes to deliver in that kind of emergency circumstance? Um, I'm appalled at the callous decision or position rather that NuVance has shared. Which effectively boils down to holding the entire future of Sharon Hospital hostage unless labor and delivery is closed. And that to me is a false binary. This demonstrates a dangerous reduction of the circumstances and a lack of necessary nuance and approach. There are surely ways to keep labor and delivery services open while maintaining a lean operation that continues to serve the broad needs of the community. If you look down the path that NuVance wishes to take and you follow it to its logical conclusion. Sharon Hospital is in danger of being reduced to nothing more than a glorified at best and underperforming at worst urgent care facility. My understanding is that oftentimes the labor and delivery department is the key backbone of a hospital, as we just heard. That keeps other critical services in check and available, especially and including services that many non-birthing people, including seniors and other core groups in our community. Have come to depend on. So you've heard many logical arguments as to why this transition plan would put parents and newborns at grave risk. I don't need to rehash all of that, but I, I do want to say that it's not just new parents and children that would be affected by cuts to labor and delivery. And just, just as an aside, NuVance argues that demand isn't there, that costs are too high and that therefore labor and delivery. Must be closed to keep the rest of the hospital alive. They claim that the volume isn't there, but then suggests that. Uh a better alternative would be instead to spe- spread providers then across multiple areas so that the volume is at a profitable or viable level. And I struggle to understand how in that case that would improve the experience for community members. But even beyond that, what good is a hospital if, if, if many of its critical functions are diminished or no longer there? While in the short term, closing labor and delivery would mean only closing birth and maternity services. It also follows that other departments and functions like anesthesiology or a twenty-four hour on-call operating room. Could also soon end up on the chopping block in the name of saving on costs. And especially if there's less demand because labor and delivery no longer exists. Not to mention the fact that others have pointed to, many ER doctors hesitate to work at a hospital that lacks a labor, labor and delivery function. So this could affect the hospital's ability to attract high quality talent. NuVance has claimed that it has no such plans at this time. But already a big reason we're here in the first place is because NuVance has already demonstrated that they can't even keep their existing promises from a previous twenty-eighteen agreement. So what reason do we have to trust them? These non-labor and delivery services I just mentioned are services that many community members, including those in support of NuVance's plan, would depend on. It's not hard to see how down the road, these could be cut to putting additional members of the community at risk. Should an emergency requiring these services arise? So I ask OHS, where is the end to the closure and reduction of services in the name of cutting costs? What is the end result here? Healthcare is not exactly known to be revenue driver, so it feels absurd to reduce this solely to profits and losses. How else can we hold the hospital network, especially a not-for-profit one accountable to its mission of serving the community? And fulfilling its promises if not demanding the hospital networks like NuVance offer critical services? I just have a little bit more beyond all of this, beyond all of this. I just want you to consider the broader ecosystem that exists that's centered around labor and delivery. We have strong women's health services that work here. We have uh pediatric facilities that you heard from Dr. Cavley. We have families, daycare, school systems, small businesses in this area, many of which depend on that thread that goes all the way back to labor and delivery existing. So I just want you to also consider the downstream impact that closing labor and delivery would have. Thank you. I hope you all have a restful evening.
Thank you. And lastly, Rebecca Ridgeway, is she still present?
I don't believe so.
I am, I'm here.
But you sure is.
I am, hi.
About that.
No problem. Um, I just first wanted to say thank you so much for staying late. I hope you all get to sleep in tomorrow. Um, I really appreciate this opportunity to speak because I would like to provide my unique experience as an EMT and my perspective on this issue. Hearing out throughout the day, the emergencies that I might get called to. Related to a pregnancy, especially an emergency which does happen is terrifying. Um, I know firsthand the difference that a few minutes can make when you are going lights and sirens to a hospital. The difference between going to Sharon and Charlotte or going to a uh hospital that we, I've never personally transported to because it's so far away. Um, I think that it's very important that we recognize the difference. That this can make on our EMS providers. It's a lot different experience um going from New Milford to Danbury than going from Sharon, which we have part of our um. Part of Sharon is in our area from going to Sharon to Torrington. The roads are very different. And one fact is that if a baby starts crowning from the time that we get them into that ambulance. We have to pull over and deliver the baby ourselves. So that means the quality of care that this person would get would go from someone like Dr. Mortman, who does this all the time. Has been doing it for, before I was born at Sharon Hospital to someone like me who is trained but has never done it before. And so I think that's really important to recognize that this difference does make a difference. Because every time that tone goes off, it is because somewhat, something happened to someone that they didn't plan for. You can put all the plans in place, but emergency hap- emergencies happen. That's why we have ambulances. That's why we have fire departments. And it is terrifying to think of having to spend longer in the back of an ambulance with a hemorrhaging woman. Who just wants to have a healthy baby because NuVance decided to shut down this to make some money. Um, and get a higher profit margin. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Ridgeway. Um, I think that is all that we have to get through. Uh as I mentioned earlier, I'll be issuing an order about the late files. Um, and if there is any need for follow-up after um I issue that order, we can certainly address it. I believe that is it. Uh. Steve, Annie, Yudira, do you have any additional questions or, or anything that needs to be addressed?
Attorney, we're all set.
Hearing Officer, may, may I make a quick comment? Uh, I would just want to thank you for uh sticking it out until uh late at night. Uh, we really appreciate it. It made a big difference to both the applicant and the intervenor. And we want to thank you for your persistence in listening to the public in up to this very late hour. Uh, so uh we uh join uh Mr. Tucci in thanking you for your efforts here.
Thank you. And, and as a reminder to the public, if anyone didn't get an opportunity to speak, they're free to submit uh written comment as well. Um, but for right now, uh thank you to all who are still present and for those witnesses who may have uh. Gone home or, or gone on to other endeavors, please set, pass on my gratitude to them as well. Um, so this hearing is hereby adjourned, uh but the hearing record will remain open until closed by OHS. And I will speak to that point in the order on the late files.
I have one, one, one more question. Uh, uh, I think you had said earlier that uh we would be, if, if there was no information in late files, we would be given an opportunity to respond. So I would like to uh, uh, just to define uh, uh, you know, the timeframe for doing that.
That, that was in specific reference to one of the late files, um specifically. I think it was Mr. Rosenberg's or, or a financial statement that, that Mr. Rosenberg was referring to.
He, he hasn't put that in yet. And then there's other information that might be relevant that. Would like to at least have the opportunity to make a, a short response if that's uh, uh, in order.
That, that's not in the hearing officer's order. It actually is specifically against the hearing officer's order. You, there, with respect to a late file on, on that one particular exhibit, that's one thing. But the proceeding should not be extended into a back and forth on late files.
Um, and that would be uncommon uh practice as well. Uh, I, I don't think there is historically, that's been done uh at the agency. Um, I, I can take the.
Will we have?
For what they are. I'm sorry, Attorney, can I?
Will we have the opportunity to respond to that one late file that Mr. Rosenberg might put in?
Yes.
And what would be the timeframe for doing that?
Um, I, I'm going to have to look at what all of the late files are. Um, and I'm probably, I, I'd say a week would sound reasonable to me.
Yes, thank you.
Um, is there anything else? Okay. Uh, so as I mentioned, this hearing is hereby adjourned, but the record will remain open until closed by OHS. Thank you again to everyone and have a good evening.